I will call the October fourteenth regular council meetings order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic of which stands ordinance under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Don't have any proclamations or presentations tonight, so we'll go straight to public petitions, communications and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council. First session has a two-minute time limit. I'll go to the room first. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment? Yes.
Oh, I'm Beckett Ryan. It is Lynn, and I'd like to tell you about the teachers that have been cut over the past two years visiting council. There's been one history teacher, one English teacher. I don't know the names of those teachers. We've had a Spanish teacher. Her name was Miss Carr. We've had two science teachers. One of them, Mrs. Harret. She was the botany teacher. Mrs. Lomfettkins. I don't. She was just a science teacher. Miss Fontaine in the library. She was the librarian. We've cut that position and made it a lower position of a library manager who is not certified to teach. Um, we've cut Mrs. Salerno, the LPN in the nurses' office. That means that the nurse's office is closed part of the time. There's been a math teacher that retired. Her position was replaced. Most of the special education teachers, especially in the late, left because of this budget craziness. We've lost um, two science teachers, two math, or one math teacher, one English teacher, one world language teacher, one history teacher, one PE teacher. And we're down to critical levels where classes are being overfull filled and people can't get in the classes that they need to be in.
I'll go to the Zoom. Yes, uh, can you unmute? Lacy Oten?
Um, yes, my name is Lacy Booton. Um, as Beckett had stated, we've let, uh, we've lost many, many teachers over the years that I had attended Talon High School, um, as well as recently some teachers I understand have left willingly to secure their future because of how volatile the Talon school systems are at this point. I have noticed class materials being limited due to budget limitations. Students are stressed because of um, of changes in their school. Classes are no longer offered that used to be offered. Clubs have been impacted both in being able to run, being able to fund themselves, and in this past year, specifically in Botany Club, I know um, our, both of our advisors have left because of the um, budget and the uh, they, they had to leave because they valued the safety of their job. Thank you.
Can we get an address for the record?
Um, yes, um, six oh seven Post.
Thank you. Go back to the room. Uh, yes.
Bob Rubino, two nine six White Gold Road. Uh, here direct mic comments, item eight point two. It's the tax relief for qualifying seniors as well as permanently disabled. Uh, I'd like to show my appreciation for the council to once again revisit this. Uh, last time you did this was in two thousand twenty-three. And I think it's good that you're doing this on a more periodic basis to make sure it's aligned with certain realities on the ground. Um, current economic climate as well as the reality that as we continue to make tweaks to the program, uh, participation in the program still seems to lag what you would anticipate uh, from say the bottom third of people who should qualify and should participate. Uh, I'm gonna leave it there for the moment. I provided Jason Lawrence some information on the distribution of household income. It's a function of the eye towards, if you're going to increase the qualifying income for the program, how many more homes uh, may potentially qualify? So if, as you require maybe some greater color on how we arrive at that, I'll be available.
Thank you. I'll go back to the Zoom. I'll go back to the room. Go to the Zoom. Go back to the room one more time. Yes.
Good evening. So, identity against six eight nine Thomas Street Road. I would welcome at some point either a discussion amongst the council or something on the website that clarifies what the speed limit means, uh, either in Connecticut or in Talon. I don't know whether it's any different. My observation has been that it's viewed by about eighty, ninety percent of the people in town as the minimum speed limit if one should be going. And I've had, uh, I don't know, five, six, seven people pass me on the double yellow line heading towards uh, the mountain and just getting in before cars coming down the mountain, come down the mountain. I actually for a while was, was standing out front taking pictures of license plates. And I got all kinds of reaction from that, only for cars that were going well over forty miles an hour as registered on the speed limit sign. One night I had a car follow me through town on my bumper uh, with his high beams on, all the way down to the light at the highway. And uh, went then passed me actually on the right when he was supposed to either go on the highway or whatever. It went into the gas station, so I've got thirty seconds left. So he, uh, I asked him about the speed limit in town. And he didn't know what it was because he was quoting the wrong number. And when I questioned him about going the speed limit and that that's the law, as I was not surprised to hear him say, F U C blank the law. Okay, because that's how people act when it comes to speed limits in town. So I would welcome any kind of discussion among the council as to what the speed limit's supposed to represent and/or whether there be something on the website that um, would uh, kind of clarify for individuals since they're not quite certain what it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll go to Zoom. I'll go to the room one last time. Go to Zoom one last time. Here now we'll close out public participation. Thank you. Uh, we do not have any public hearing items today, so that'll bring us to reports of boards and committees responsible to this town council. I think that we did meet before the last council meeting. Or?
I don't believe we did.
Okay, I mean, we can maybe.
Yeah, I think that, I think, yeah, the, so we, the upcoming meeting is the twenty-first, and I think we just gave a, we said it was gonna be on the twenty-first. We haven't had a special meeting, so.
Yeah.
Um, you want to, if I can supplement, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'll just highlight that, um, Merrily and myself just uh, met um, on the side to talk a little bit about roles and responsibilities. We know there's an election coming up, so we want to make sure there's a smooth handoff between um, whomever ends up taking um, over that committee. So we'll um, discuss that on the next agenda. Um, haven't responded yet to Beckett saying, want that on there, but it will be on the agenda and um, otherwise um, we continue to make progress towards putting out a sort of proposal for um, station four forty.
Yeah, I think our, our proposed bid date is still the end of December, uh, December, end of October, with bids due in, um, with the um, anticipation that we would then proceed to contract and construction in November.
I believe it's the Thursday before Halloween. I'd have to double check on that, but that's what I thought.
I know she gave us a date. Um, we could look it up, but that's the plan. And the idea is then to move forward expeditiously. The, the specs and plans have been created and everything's been generated, so.
Yeah.
You know, there'll be a, it never goes as fast as you want it to, but it's going faster than we expected it to.
Yeah. Definitely good. Hopefully, you know, a roof project on four forty is relatively.
Yeah.
Quick ever.
And that, just for the record, that's the firehouse subcommittee.
Yes.
For Lisa.
Brian, any updates uh, on CROG or EHHD?
Sure, EHHD, the, the executive director was here uh, last week. We met um, to discuss uh, the water, uh, the contaminated wells issue. Again, questioning uh, the state and trying to determine how long it's gonna take and how we can each push to get that done quicker. He was also here to meet with some of the residents in the Lakeview Heights area, although I expect one of the wells to come off of the list very shortly. Uh, CCM is on, the director will be in my office tomorrow um, for our annual meeting and their conference um, is coming up. CROG. We continue to work through our, and I'll get into it, and town managers report the uh, regionalization of our animal control officers. Uh, and I believe I have a, another meeting tomorrow. I can enter my calendar with CROG as well.
Good. Um, and then the Containment Wells test, of course, hasn't met, but you did mention that it was a topic of discussion with EHHD. Anything else that council should know about that? Okay, um, any questions for Brian? We'll move to item seven B, reports of town council liaisons. Well, here in person, that makes nice sense.
Councilman? Yeah, so this is for Talon Conservation Commission. Everyone's been out on the greens. Obviously, all the scarecrows are looking good. Talon Conservation Commission has theirs out. They also did a drive for uh, according firewood that was dried, uh, and raffled during the harvest fest, which was great this past weekend. Another thing I just wanted to bring attention to, um, there's the, they're calling it the nip it in the bud program. So that's kind of uh, an incentive for town residents to go around and collect um, nip bottles. And you get an Amazon gift card. So if you get fifty nip bottles, it's a ten dollar gift card. If you get a hundred, that's twenty. So it's a, I think, a pretty easy bar to pass considering the amount of trash you could find on the side of the road. If anybody would want to um, or needs any help receiving, you know, the paper bag that comes with that, um, you can email the conservation, email which is conservation@talnct.gov. Contact the town council member, even though some of our, our time up here is running short unfortunately. And the bottles will be collected during the TCC bottle drives. So the first collection drive is scheduled for spring of twenty twenty-six. So great thing that Conservation Commission's doing, and then uh, I just wanted to personally thank all the volunteers that are, especially this time of year with dead falls and pathways that are obstructed going out and clearing our beautiful pathways in Talon, so.
Thank you. Ed, if I easy to, to make a buck, bottles on. Councilor Gray?
Uh, the rec board was scheduled to meet on October sixth, but didn't have a quorum. I reached out to Director Janine and he didn't have any updates. They're meeting again on November tenth.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor?
Don't have any meetings since our last meeting, both the Historic District Commission and Commission on People with Disabilities meet this week, so for our last meeting, there should be some updates.
Thank you. Councilor Shay?
Yeah.
Councilor Reed?
Planning and zoning had a meeting on the sixth of October and discussed uh, possible modifications to the master plan overlay zone um, to facilitate a larger, mostly um, mostly in commercial zones, but to facilitate larger developments. And then also to the assisted living regulations, um, that's an ongoing discussion and um, Dave can correct me, but I think uh, any proposed changes will go to public hearing um, at a future meeting, and they meet again at the end of October.
Thank you. Right, I've got a couple of boards. Um, so the Board of Education met on September twenty-fourth, and I attended that meeting on Zoom. Um, there they discussed um, the SASSA officer position, which I forget what the what the title stands for, but it's, so it's not quite a, a law enforcement officer, but someone that helps um, with a lot of kind of social worker related issues, I suppose would be the best way to put it. So they also approved their capital budget request. Um, so that'll get sent to the council. Um, the next council will get to chew up on that. As part of the larger town capital requests in the next couple of months. Other noteworthy things, they expanded the open choice program to the second grade now, so I think it's now kindergarten through second grade. That brings a little bit of money up into the town. And then finally, they did approve their twenty twenty-six meeting dates. Calendar is available. Also, the Economic Development Commission met um, on the first of August. Couple of their items will be either on this agenda right now, or they're going to be on the twenty-eighth agenda. So we have um, a request to extend a, a tax abatement agreement, um, which is item eight three on the agenda, so we can look at that and talk more about it at that time. Um, the other thing that'll be on the agenda for the twenty eighth is they adopted their economic development plan, um, which was reviewed by Planning and Zoning as well. So hoping on the twenty eighth, you can bring that to council um, for us to review. May do some good for the council to um, adopt that plan or endorse it at some point, but that's obviously up to discussion with the council to see what what makes sense. And that's all I have. So I think that closes out the liaison reports unless anybody has questions for each other.
Um, I have to, one question. So the, the nip it in the bud um, program, which I thought, I, I saw the sign the second time I passed by and thought it was a really great initiative. Is that, is that the one that's funded by the tax on the nip bottles?
Yes.
How we're funding that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's like a really great kind of circular.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Frank Beaver.
Yeah. All right. That moves us to item eight one, our new business, which is the annual meeting of the Talon Public Library Foundation, Inc., to discuss reappointment of foundation directors, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five accomplishments, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six goals, and the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six approved budget, as well as an overview of the foundation activities of the last year. Brian, have you started off?
Sure. Uh, with us tonight is, is Linda Byam. The, the Talon Public Library Foundation, Inc. is an host and a partner to the town of Talon, uh, and a main reason our library is uh, so great. I can't speak enough. Every time I've gone to them for assistance, uh, they've been amazing. Attached to, to the packet is a letter as well uh, that outlines the, the reappointments, accomplishments and goals uh, that Linda's uh, here to discuss. So Linda, Linda's a volunteer on so many levels in town, not just here, but uh, Linda, thank you so much for coming and floor chairs.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, Linda Byam, seventy, with Phil Stride, but tonight I'm here as the president of the Talon Public Library Foundation. I'm also joined by Jan Rubino on Zoom, who is our treasurer, and also uh, Mary Ann Pelletier, who you all know as our library directors, if she's here involved with me tonight. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to um, provide me this um, time to update you and to give you the chance to ask any questions that you have of the Library Foundation. As Brian mentioned, I have provided you uh, the letter with all the details, so I'm not gonna go through it because I saw yesterday that you guys have a very cool agenda tonight. So I won't um, go through that. You can read it, but if you have questions on anything, please let me know. I'll just highlight a few of the things, particularly some of the things that we're going to be working on in the coming year. So for those who are not aware of what the Talon Public Library Foundation is, we are an organization that is separate from the town. Um, we have our own endowment and we receive funds specifically to make grants to the library above and beyond what the town budget is uh, of, able to provide. So enhancements to the library, um, uh, items and services. So we have been very lucky to be the recipient of um, some very generous estate bequests over the past years. And so now we currently have a significant endowment, which generates income, which is what we use to provide grants to the library. We're no longer a fundraising organization. We use our endowment funds to do that, so we're in a, um, in a, a good position to be able to do that. So um, as far as our accomplishments go, really, we provide funds to the library to promote the library and its changing role as a hub in a changing community, as a digital um, gathering place for people. So we spend our money basically in three main areas. The first one is in programs and um, and items. So if you have heard of the Talon, I mean, the Eat and Dim it King author series, we are having the fifteenth year of that. We support that. And we're bringing authors and local authors into town that have been published. We also provide items such as cornhole, whiteboards, bookshelves, uh, cooking programs. We support paint-to-pet programs, needle felting. We provided funds for the bench at the front of the library, um, yoga program, puppet show. And if you guys uh, were in the library for the egg hatching program, um, Mary Ann told us that that program alone brought um, hundreds of people into the library, many of them for the first time with their children. So they were able to really kind of provide an overview of what the library is to families for the first time, just because of that program, people came in to see that. We provided indoor play items for the uh, children's center, the summer programs. And we've even provided a laptop for the reference library and, and attendance at one of the Connecticut um, Library Association conferences. So those are like the items and the programs. We also, our second area that we really um, fund is us, we support many of the digital and the electronic resources that have become a main staple of the library programs. First and foremost, we are the sole provider of funding for hoopla, um, which has become more and more popular for patrons remotely to um, gain access to digital digital media. We also provide funding for ancestry.com, Job Now, um, uh, registration service. If you register for any of the library services, you call the library, register online, provide funding for that. Canva, the Library Speakers Consortium, Universal Class, which is an online continuing education service. We provide now four mobile hotspots that are available to lend out to families who don't have um, uh, a, a accessible connection. Also the Swank movie license and the Zoom license. And the third area that we really um, spend money on is um, to allocate resources to our administrative functions. And which is unnecessary, which is a necessary part of becoming a foundation. Our, although our expenses are not significant, we do have to provide, um, you know, money to, so, so we can maintain the ability to provide funds for the library in perpetuity for many years to come. So we have a website we have to um, sustain. We have a Facebook page. We work to raise our awareness of the foundation. So we will hopefully continue to accept and receive generous bequests from estates and individuals in the future. We maintain a database of our donors and uh, we also work very closely with our fiduciary investment advisor who comes to report to us um, frequently on our investments. Um, our goals for next year, we're very pleased to uh, to announce that we um, are going to be unveiling a legacy wall or a donor wall in the library. And this is to really honor and celebrate the enduring contributions of donors, past, present and future, to the Talon Public Library Foundation. It will really highlight the vital role of philanthropy in sustaining and advancing this foundation's mission of enhancing the library. And hopefully, one of the missions is it will, once the wall is up, it will inspire ongoing and continuing support. So people who may not be aware of the foundation will say, oh, I didn't realize that this was an organization and this is what they do. So um, after this wall is installed, we're planning to have a in-person unveiling event, so you'll all be aware when that happens. So I do have some pictures. Um, Sarah Beth was very kind to provide this, so that, um, page seven and eight, you can see the wall, the current library wall. That's where the um, the wall is that we're going to be using. It's, it's underneath the stacks and um, it's like kind of in the middle of the library. So that is the wall that we're gonna be using. And the next photo is um, the artist's rendition of what it's going to look like. Oh, so sad. So hopefully, we're uh, we're on track to have that installed in sometime in January. So if you look at the wall, you can see on the, there's different color leaves that will designate different color levels of donation. The, our main donation was um, several hundred thousand dollars, which has grown um, significantly over the past ten years or more. Um, and so that is the main donation in the trunk. We have other significant donations that will be branches. We have birds that um, will designate different levels. On the right, um, where the man is standing, we will list all donations of any level. So if somebody gives five dollars to the Library Foundation, they will be recognized in that and we'll update that every year. On the other side, there's an area that we can kind of do a little bit of storytelling, so for people who are not aware of what the foundation is, they can they can learn a little bit more about that. So um, that's the wall that we've designed. That's hopefully what it will look like, and hopefully in January, you guys will all see that. So we're really excited about that. Um, one of our other goals is the Talon Oral History Project, which we're continuing to work on. We were, we've been working on this for several years. We're, we're collecting um, interviews and recording and archiving them from citizens of Talon. What happens is somebody finds out that somebody's story has been recorded and archived and somebody else wants to do it, so it's, it's kind of been an ongoing process. So eventually, these stories will be um, turned into some type of multimedia experience that will allow the current citizens to kind of interact with these stories from the past. Um, so more on that to come. We hope to continue to provide the focus grants to the library in um, coordination with the library director's priorities. We, um, we do not have an advisory role or a decision-making role. We really coordinate with her and, and, and she tells us where she wants the grants to go. We want to improve our public and business awareness of the foundation. And um, we also collaborate with other groups in town, like for example, we're at the Harvest Fest and donating a Kindle, a unit or two, to, to raise awareness of our organization. Um, our budget is included here. We also provide our financials to the town financial officer every month. And we have a registered um, CPA that reviews our, our, provides our, our tax, taxes every year. So um, I'm here, Jan is here, Mary Ann is here. If anybody has any questions for me, I, we will do our best to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for providing an, an overview. I'll also turn it over to council first. Any questions or comments? Councilor?
I have no questions. I just want to thank you again uh, for coming in, doing this, and uh, obviously, you know, we all know that the budgets are always tight, and so the, the resources that you're able to provide to, to the library really, really help and provide some um, really uh, useful and then much needed services and equipment that we wouldn't otherwise have for the town. So thank you so much for the time that you all, all the foundation devotes to doing this. Um, it's an awesome, awesome thing. And thank you for coming in and giving us the update.
So I wanted to thank you. I brought three grandchildren to the Harvest Fest um, to your table, and I know George was at the library table, and they were absolutely thrilled and delighted with the little, with the pencils and the little stickers and just the whole, like, when they heard there was a library table, it was thrilling for them. So thank you for doing such a great job there.
Glad to hear that.
Councilor Gray?
I saw him.
I'm, no, I'm looking forward to seeing the donor wall.
Yeah, great. Okay, thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
So I'll just say it's a, it's just general, I think it's, it's great to see so much work done by good volunteers too. Unfortunately, we have volunteers up in our town, so definitely makes a difference. All right. One, one other question, Brian, for that item. It says discuss reappointment of foundation directors, but there's no action item. Is there?
It's later and then it's been done to the appointment.
Oh, it's in that. Okay.
Yep.
That makes sense. All right, that moves us to item eight two, continuation of presentation and discussion of proposed divisions to ordinate sixty, AKA the Talon Tax Relief Program for permanently disabled and senior residents, and the setting of a public hearing there on October twenty, twenty twenty-five.
All right, uh, thank you, Chair. So at our last meeting, we began discussions to improve our ordinate sixty, our, our Talon Tax Relief Program uh, for the permanently disabled and our, and our senior residents, uh, and making sure that we're able to, for residents are able to get more access or increased access to it, as was the intent. Uh, with us is our finance director, Yulita Lazowski, Jason Lawrence, and the architect of really the original uh, ordinate sixty, Bob Rubino's here too. uh and the architect of really the original uh ordinance sixty, Bob Rubino's here too. Uh if we have any questions, I I consulted with him in the last couple of weeks, as has uh Jason. And uh it's uh back to you for any questions you have for Jason. Jason is is on uh Zoom. Yolita's here and Bob's here.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I'll just start off quickly, because um one more thing, did the tool get sent out to everybody or is it just you and Chris? Okay. I forwarded it. Oh, yeah, okay. I forwarded it to you, John, no, it's like this. Um, but yeah, essentially, it's it's um a helpful um tool that Yolita and Jason put together to help calculate what happens if you change the um starting benefit, the step benefit. Um, and it'll show you what the annual cost is over the next seven years. So I'll send it out. It was pretty handy.
And it will, the assumption was, the assumption was we were starting, yeah, this is what they populated. And then it's a
Yeah.
interactive, it's a program switch.
Yeah, and I'll forward it just a second, but I did wanna um make a couple of comments for context. And then just my own thoughts on it.
It's cool, Ben, it's been redacted. You have to, you have to use it.
Oh, I'll get it. Oh, you know, yeah, that might be hard on the phone.
Sure.
I had a hard time opening it on my phone and that's why I opened it on my
Yeah, on the actual computer. Yeah. But um
No, I don't care. No, I don't care. I don't care if you do.
But a couple of top line notes just for the tool is you play within, as we talked about it tonight. Um, it already assumes that the income threshold is increased from seventy eight thousand, where it is today, to ninety one thousand, which was a proposal from the last meeting.
Yep.
Um, so that's already held it into there. It all assumes that you make ten more applicants every year. Um, and let's see.
What was the, what was the increasing answer?
Seventy thousand and ninety one thousand for income. Um.
And the and the um asset allocation increase correspondingly with that, or the asset allowance.
And it also doesn't, um, which is good, it doesn't account for people like falling out of the program, I think. So
Yeah.
These are like very sort of like realistically or
Conservative.
Conservative figures.
Yeah, you built it conservative, which is good. Um, and then the starting benefit module would apply to all applicants going back to day one of the program. So um, yeah, something to think about. Um, my personal thoughts, and I'd like to hear what the room is thinking, but um, kind of way I see is we're not at the cap now. Uh we're actually not even really that close to it, like halfway. Um, so where I'd kind of like to start is I'd love to see the starting benefits pumped up. Um, and then um definitely I think the ninety one thousand makes sense, especially given the tools that we see. It doesn't even, like, I think it gets us somewhat, actually not even that close to the um to the cap. So I think like it kind of makes sense to do a combination of that. And then to uh Mr. Rubino's earlier point, um, let's see how many people are utilizing it and and see the impact. And you know, at if the time is right, we should, I think the future councils should definitely consider increasing the cap. Uh but I think the first place to start is let's just really think about increasing the benefit um and the eligibility level. Um, let's see where that gets us, but open other people's thoughts. Um, Councilor.
Yeah, I I I agree with you, um, Councilor. I think uh increasing the the income threshold, the corresponding asset threshold is obviously important because um you know, inflation and and sort of economic realities of that, you know, all households are facing seniors and others. Um, and as you mentioned, it doesn't have a huge impact on, you know, the cap that we're using. I also think it's important to increase the amount of the benefit people are getting initially so that it's like a more meaningful impact for people to qualify for it. Um, obviously, doing that in a, you know, cautiously responsible way to, you know, ensure that we're, you know, we're balancing things out. But I think even with the tool that was provided, um, you know, increasing it to uh, you know, five hundred, six hundred, whatever, whatever we decide upon. And I think there's a way to do that, keep it within the cap. So that way, we're actually utilizing the funds that we allocated for this, which at this point, I think we're at like fifty percent or something like that. Or maybe a little more, but I can't remember the air balance. Yeah, so um we still have money on the table that we haven't um that isn't benefiting any residents. So I think um the big thing is having a more meaningful impact on how much they're qualified for. Yeah.
Yolita, can you, uh, or Brian remind me, what what is the starting minute to the benefit today? Is it five hundred, three hundred? Who was the random? Okay, so I forgot that detail. So the original scenario poses going up by two hundred.
Can I ask a quick question about, um, so, um, J- Jason, um, Mr. Rubino had said that he'd provided us some additional information that may impact the number of households that might be eligible. Are there any um updates about that that we should be aware of?
Yeah, um, I did not receive it uh from Bob in time to uh make it part of the presentation. But um he did some research uh using a twenty twenty one Tufts um survey to look at distribution. And um he determined that fourteen hundred and sixty six homes in Talon uh have that meet that criteria of sixty five and older. Um, and in doing that, uh the income range was fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. And that would put us at a thirty six percent um um I guess applicant rate um versus where we're at is a twenty seven percent applicant rate now. So using just the income numbers um based on the number of households gives you um the percent of our population. So basically, uh thirty seven or thirty six percent versus a twenty seven percent uh where we were falling uh maybe before. So um by getting up to that next level, that ninety thousand um for the for the income cap, it should reach um, you know, a higher percentage of folks. Um, and then some of his um um assumptions were that that would reach a hundred and ninety three households instead of the one fifty seven that we're at right now.
Okay.
Jason, did you say fourteen hundred and sixty six houses? Is that what the first thing you mentioned?
Yes, yep, yep.
That, but that, I assume that's not, that's more than just seniors, or is it not?
Um, Bob could probably speak to that, um, if you wanna ask him, um.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, what was the question? Uh, so I think the number initially that that Jason had mentioned um was fourteen hundred and sixty six houses um in that, I I forgot the number you said, Jason, the
Sixty five and older.
Oh, that was
Yep.
Yeah, from the twenty twenty one Tufts report, they they say there are fourteen hundred and sixty six homes or sixty five and older. And that by increasing the qualifying income from its current seventy one to the proposed ninety one would net something like a hundred and ninety seven additional homes.
Okay.
However, that would be the best case scenario. If you were to say, what is, what are we currently enjoying? And apply that to the hundred and ninety seven, you would net something like fifty two additional homes.
Okay, thank you. I I understand. I think that makes sense. Thank you for that.
And that's if everybody applies and
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the calculus of why people do or do not apply. I think Jason addressed maybe a very important one of them. By putting the seventy five percent of your tax liability cap and eliminating the lien. Um, as we get older, we tend to get very anxious about extra entanglements on our our most important investment. Avoid, say, probating that. So maybe we'll see a a big jump up just by eliminating the lien aspect.
But the lien
But the lien is a part of ordinance sixty.
It wasn't, but I believe that there was a requirement that as you got above seventy five percent, the rest of it would have gone into lien. Is that correct, Jason?
Yeah.
But that's through, that's through the other ordinance, right?
Twenty five.
Twenty five.
That's, that's uh, the deferral is ordinance twenty five, that is a straight lien. This um had a provision in it at the end that said anything over seventy five percent would be leaned against your um uh as a deed recording. So we eliminated that and we talked about that at our last meeting to say that we will cap the um uh the benefit at seventy five percent of your tax bill.
Yeah, no, I I think that's right. I I didn't know that we ever had.
Yeah, I watched Sarah on that.
Yeah, okay.
How old is this program?
It's over twenty five years.
And how long has it been? Three hundred dollars to start?
Two years, twenty twenty.
Yeah, in twenty three, it went to a defined benefit. Because prior to that, it was tax free. Very cumbersome, very difficult to calculate, very difficult to say to the applicant, what are you gonna get? Very difficult for the council to understand what's it gonna cost.
Yeah.
So two years ago, you moved to this defined benefit, which is much clearer for both the applicant and you, the fiscal managers at the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if I could, there are really two levers that you can work to approach the cap, which is set at half a percent of the town's operating budget. The first lever is you can change the level of benefit. Three hundred could be five hundred. The annual could go up to maybe two hundred dollars or three hundred dollars a year for every year in the program. That was perhaps the most easy to understand. The second lever is the one where you change the qualifying income, the one that we're looking at tonight. That one is a little more difficult because the average tenure in the program is ten years. So as more people get in the program, the impact, the cost of the program, doesn't reach its steady state until ten years down the road. So just round numbers, if the average of ten years is a twenty five hundred dollar benefit for every person, you add fifty some odd people as we're projecting you might, that has an implication of about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for the program. So between these two things, um, you can ratchet yourself up to at half a percent. But the very worst thing would be, and I think originally uh when the study committee looked at this was, we want to be as generous as we can, but the very worst thing is if the program goes bankrupt.
Right.
And then how you have people who've been dependent on the program are now in a lurch.
Yeah. I I, that makes sense. I mean, I like the, I like raising the cap. I like capping, uh getting rid of the lien and and capping at seventy five percent. I'd like to see us double the the entry level to six hundred, you know, and get the word out to seniors that this is available. Uh, and then, you know, continue with it's a hundred dollars a year, right? You get each additional year. To me, that makes, that makes sense and it and it opens up the program to more people and maybe makes it more attractive, you know, to apply. So, my thought.
Um, Councilor.
Yeah, just to piggyback off of um, Councilor Ray, what would you say the most um common avenue of communication to seniors is for this program?
I think that's a question that are answered by either Jason or Bedd Bell.
Okay. Like, what I'm getting at is we tried to gear away from computers. Um, and make it more accessible to to seniors. Maybe at churches or senior centers or flyers are easier um to kind of prevail that word. Well, it's a finite number of homes too that we can, you know, target and send mailers to.
It's, it is in every tax bill. Um, unfortunately, when you get your tax bill in June, the time is passed to apply. So it's a reminder to say, hey, next year, you need to apply. Um, obviously, this program application period is February one to May fifteen. And it's after the budget, um, or, you know, it starts before you guys are done with the budget. And so that's why we're always estimating what the cost is gonna be to the town. We don't know um until the last application comes in, May fifteenth. And then we do the math to determine what the final cost is gonna be. Um, but we do, I've got it in probably seven different places. It goes in the senior newsletter, um, Bev advertises it. It's on our webpage, it's on the main page. Uh, we put it in the um, uh Rec puts out a uh newsletter, uh so it's in that as well. Uh, I mean, we've done as much as we can to kind of publicize it short of, you know, going to all the people's homes. Uh, we do send the applications um to everybody that's due. So it's a, it's a um um every other year application. So we send those applications to those people. And I think realistically, the best case scenario is word of mouth uh between the seniors, because I do think that they talk to each other and they do attend senior um events. So I, yeah, I don't, I don't know what else um aside from sending a letter to everybody who's in town and just say, hey, the application period has begun. If you'd like to sign up for this, feel free. Hey, I mean, that's an expense to send mailers to every household, so.
Thank you. Can I ask a clarifying question?
Uh, yes.
Um, when you looked at um your your demographic data to determine the increase in number of homes, was that purely based on raising the income cap? Or did that also consider, was there some way that you could consider the asset valuation as well? Because I know some people might fall below the income cap, but they, the asset valuation would still be something they couldn't meet.
Yeah, um, the data that's available to us is pretty sparse.
Uh, right.
Um, particularly since a lot of the uh programs to do this now unfunded. So you have to go back to twenty one.
Right.
So Tufts reported the four income levels of six, twenty seven, thirty three, and then finally the thirty one percent as, think of it as thirds.
Yep.
Where the median household income for a sixty five plus family is about ninety thousand dollars. So what I had done for Jason was to say, okay, with the Tufts data, try to fit this with a normal distribution
Mm-hmm.
for those thirds, where, you know, the bottom is around twenty thousand and the top is in excess of two hundred thousand.
Right.
There are some fairly well-to-do seniors in this, in this town.
Right.
Uh, so from that curve, for every five thousand dollars, uh you increase the qualifying income. Uh, we're at a point in the curve where you net an additional, call it ninety homes.
Okay.
So I just applied that twenty seven percent success rate to then back that down to maybe something closer to reality, which is fifty.
Okay.
But as far as assets, um, maybe Jason can talk to that as far as what he's seeing, but we don't have data for that.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's basically a question that we ask during the application phase. Um, a lot of applications are filled in at the counter. And when we're talking to folks, we just ask them, do you own any other properties? Because it doesn't count your current
Right.
residents, you know, unless it's above and beyond a normal home. Um, so do you own another house on the Antucket? The answer to that is always no. Um, but I'm sure it might be the case is yes, and we just have to take people at their word. And um, that's, I mean, as far as that goes, we can't really vet that information very well because there's no uh search engine that says, who does John Q? Um, where else does he own property? You know, so we're taking people by their word on them.
So they don't have to provide tax data because it would be on their tax data?
Well, when they file their income taxes, if they are claiming other expenses for another property, then we would pass that question.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. I know that's, that's, that's harder.
Um. So I think maybe just for purposes of moving the discussion along, unless anybody has any other clarifying questions, maybe it'd be good to just kind of go around and see where everybody is in terms of.
What, just one, yeah, clarify question, how do we come up with the asset valuation? Like, what determines?
Ten times the income level.
Why, why do we pick that?
Um, that was just a marker decided back in twenty, in two thousand. Actually, I think it was amended in two thousand and seven, and that's when that came about. Before my time.
Uh, doesn't that correspond also to what the state does, though? Doesn't the state have similar limits for their program? I thought I.
Hmm, not that, not, hmm, not for there's the circuit breaker that we do for the state now, unless there's some other program, renters or something that we don't, that's not a program that we, that we handle in the assessors.
Maybe I'm thinking of something different, but I, I thought I read, um, a, an estate program that it was a multiple of income, and so it was in that range. I can look it up. Thank you.
Would it happen to note, uh, that there is any history behind that number?
I don't.
Okay. Any other just clarifying questions? Okay. All right, so, you know, the, the objective for tonight is to kind of line up on how we're gonna change the program so that we can put an ordinance to public hearing up on the twenty-eighth. So, um, maybe discuss what levers we can pull. Um, Counselor Grady, I think you kind of aligned what you were thinking. I heard six hundred for the start and, um, I assume you're okay with the ninety-one K, but, yeah, all right.
Yeah, I mean, okay, I'm, I'm ready. I'd like to make a motion that we do this right now, that we increase it to six hundred dollars. Make the cap, uh, ninety-one thousand and a cap of seventy-five percent and, uh, remove the lien.
Or income.
I mean, income.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ten ninety.
So, that would be, okay. Um. Yeah, so that the income level, okay. Um, so are you making a motion to suggest that changes to the language?
Yes.
Okay.
For clarification, um, it's the two-family, um, household income level, and that happens to be eighty-one oh five oh, so we don't set the actual number. We're just saying ten thousand dollars on top of the two-family median household for Hartford County low-income level.
And let me just ask another clarifying question because it's a little complicated because it's an ordinance
Right.
of a public hearing. So, are you motioning to amend, or are you motioning to send proposed changes that were in sixty as outlined to a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'm due to make a motion.
No, so, so, it's only one. Um, is there a second for that?
Two seconds.
All right, seconded by Counselor Butler. Is there any discussion on that proposal?
Do, do we, so with, um, if we're looking at, because you've ratcheted this up like ten houses a year, right? Which is what we looked at our, on our spreadsheet. So, it sounds like we're still, because we've got a fair amount of leeway, that we're still gonna be within our, our cap, our, our parameters that we wanna stay within. Um, is there a way to do just a quick check on that?
If you.
Oh, I'm sorry, go, whoever, jump on.
Yeah, how about, uh, I'll let the, the paid staff answer the question. Go, Jason.
Uh, if you just use the calculator and put six hundred in year one and then, uh, let it run the way it is, you can look at the saturation level and, um, for twenty-four, twenty-five, and you could see that it creeps up, but it, for the most part, it's still below the seventy-five percent, um, for most applicants. You'll see some outliers in there, and some of those have to do with crumbling foundations and, um, some of our housing authority properties, which, um, we have to manually price those. So, the percentage would come down to seventy-five percent. You wouldn't see the, um, some of these say like a hundred and twenty-six percent, two hundred percent. That's because they're partial ownerships and we just didn't purge all those out of the, the worksheet.
So, so just to be clear, I was more concerned with the cap on, on the amount of funds that we have because we have that half percent. So, we, in, instead of getting an additional ten homes, we get an additional forty homes, right? Because of the increase in income levels, um, and Bob, Bob, Bob Rubino's success rate. If we do that, plus we've got the six hundred, I think we're still within our, our, I think we're still within our cap and, you know, comfortably for the next couple of years. I just wanted to verify that.
I think.
Thank you, Ernest, Jason.
Yeah, does this, this discussion, is there anything that gives you pause about the, these levels? Thank you.
Um, no, I think that, um, that it looks like for fiscal twenty-seven, the twenty-five brand list, if we added ten, we probably will lose, I think we've already lost twelve, um, uh, from people that have moved or passed, um, this year. So, um, the net result is still gonna keep it under three hundred thousand. The budget's probably gonna go up two percent. Um, we'll still be at that, we'll still be just under three hundred thousand, I would assume, which is comfortable.
Thank you. That's what I want. That was my only thing to verify.
Maybe we'll do it again in a couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and then, yeah, and then we can look at it again. We, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, as a tool, it doesn't look like you're at risk of getting that level and looking at the bar chart that they have in the deck, it's a significant amount of people leaving every single year. That isn't accounted for in all the tools, so.
Okay.
I feel good about that personally. Um, but Counselor Shay, I think you were just gonna say something?
Yeah, so I, I wish I had more time to look at that worksheet because that would be very helpful. But I still think we're being incredibly cheap here, staying at three hundred thousand. We had talked about raising the cap from the point zero zero five to point, I believe, point zero one. Right, we want, we're gonna go from point five percent to one percent. And then we talked about perhaps a thousand dollar credit as opposed to the three hundred dollar credit or the five hundred dollar credit. So, sticking to three hundred thousand, I still think is very cheap on a sixty-five million dollar budget, um, that we're trying to help our seniors out and, you know, we give them barely anything. So, I think, and again, because I didn't have time to look at this, and I also think we might be rushing this then for looking at total twenty-eight. Um, but those numbers are still way too low. And, and the two, the thirty seconds I had to look at that worksheet and I bumped it up to a thousand dollars, it barely moved the numbers. Uh, I didn't see much of anything change. So, I, I think there's more tweaking that really has to be done if you wanna make a real difference here. I think, I think three hundred thousand dollar credit on a sixty-five million dollar budget is still a choke.
I think improving the program is important, but also making sure that it's a long-term goal is to keep it solvent, you know, and make it last a long time. To Mr. Rubino's point, if you throw a lot of money into it, and right away, you risk bankrupting it.
Well, I, I guess that it's not, that's not available to seniors at all. Which question I have, how is it bankrupt? I mean, it's, it's a agreement that we build into our budget. It's not, it's not being funded by the federal government or something.
But you gotta put money into the, into it, right, Jason?
How is it?
Yeah.
How do you?
Percentage of the overall budget.
Right.
So, yeah.
You, because you add it as a cost to your budget. But, but that money comes from somewhere else.
Everybody else pays for it.
Oh, right, and the other taxes, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, we just have to be mind bumbled. And I'm, I'm, I guess, Counselor, so if, I'm most worried about wanting to get residents, you know, a meaningful impact on their, on, on the taxes, why I agree with you on that. If we're not even at like fifty percent new saturation rate using what we have at the point five percent now, why, why do, what, what's like the purpose of increasing the benefit to point one or whatever when we're not even using what we have? Well, because I, you have to increase the, you have to increase the incentive. So, you know, we're gonna bump, I think we're talking about, is it eighty-one or ninety-one? Because we're getting the.
Ninety-one.
So, I mean, we bump that up to.
Actually, over ninety-one.
And that was for a family of two, right? And then we talked about maybe using the family of four numbers instead of the family of two numbers so that we increase the income threshold a little bit. Um, I really don't know, and I don't know if we have any statistics about the impact the asset valuation has on the applications. I question what asset valuation has anything to do with giving someone credit, but that's another discussion you could have.
But if you've got five million dollars in the bank, you can afford to pay your taxes.
Well, they may not have five million dollars in the bank. They may have a second home that they're looking to leave to their kids, and you want them to sell that second home so they can pay their taxes?
Counsel, all right, can I pull point of order real quick?
Yeah.
Are we relaxing Robert's rules at this point, or does someone have the floor?
He's pretty relaxed. Me, I'm, well, I should be following all the rules.
I have, I have a question, Jacob.
Yes.
You have a point of order?
Yeah, so, me, just, yeah, just coming one moment. Um, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Thank you. You have spoken. Counselor Moran had spoken, so I don't think I've recognized anyone at this time. Um, so, I'll allow, um, Counselor BB to speak, Counselor Shay, and then I'll move on. That's all right.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Um, so, I, um, I wanna make sure that we also are prudent about what we do and the fact that we have the opportunity to, um, reevaluate this and in a more frequent, um, time period, I think is, is great. Um, I agree that we can go ahead and double the first-year benefit. We can increase the cap, um, fairly significantly, and I think we capture hopefully a, a bunch more people, as you said. Um, I agree that there, you know, getting the word out, maybe getting, I, I think we have plenty of good assistance from our, our staff. I think it's just maybe getting the word out and maybe encouraging more people. If we do capture those forty additional homes in the first year, then I would wanna be, um, a little more careful about what we, um, how much of that initial, um, credit we give, just so that we, we keep that within a prudent, um, percentage of the budget. We argued incredibly long over less than a half a percent of the budget, um, during this last budget season. So, to, to me, it's a little bit cavalier to just say, well, let's just increase it to one percent because then that other half percent will come from somewhere else. And, and we know that we are, we're gonna be impacted next, you know, this coming budget season. We're gonna see significant increases in insurance again. Um, so, we're gonna be, you know, facing some of the same challenges. So, I would like to do this. I think it provides a, a significant benefit to the people that need it most. Um, and, you know, we go on from there.
Thank you. Counselor Shay, would you have any other responses or points you'd like to make?
Yeah, so, I mean, you know my point. You know my, my position. I'm saying, I still think we'd be too cheap and to pay yourself in the back for getting a three hundred thousand dollar credit on a significant budget really doesn't do much to the people that we heard from repeatedly over the last budget cycle that said, you know, they are hurting, particularly because of the revaluation that, you know, some of these people can't afford to stay in this town anymore, and you're gonna give them another two hundred dollars and think that's gonna make a difference if they can actually stay in the town now? You have to, you have to make a significant difference to, to really impact these people in a realistic way. Other two hundred dollars is not gonna do it. So, I think we need to bump the numbers up to a real number. I mean, it doesn't impact this budget. And, you know, next budget, the costs are gonna be what they are, and if we have to modify our no rate for the, you know, the people below sixty-five, um, which is myself included, um, then so be it. But let's give the seniors in this town a real break and not some, you just can't help that it doesn't impact money.
Shay, um, anybody else have comments to remain to the motion on the floor, at Counselor Nunez?
So, yeah, I, I'd have to agree with, with Counselor Shay, um, as far as how much we're allocated to seniors. Um, I think it's a bit of a dichotomy because I've never been somebody to say, um, we have a lot of firewood over here, but we have more trees to cut. We can't give you firewood. Um, I think we should be giving what we can, when we can. The, the, the same analogy works that I got a really bad bonus this year. Do you rather not have a bonus? So, it's, I, I agree with you, Joe. I, I think moving forward, to play off of, um, Counselor Grady's point, it's better than nothing, but, uh, you know, twenty-five percent, sixty-five or older in twenty-twenty-one, that never has to be higher now unless residents have vacated or snowbird, to Joe's point, which, or leave altogether. Um, I think that that's a, a statistic that's important to it, but I, I don't think, um, that's sufficient. But moving in, in the step that we are now is important. I think it is widely, but to put your feet up after, and, you know, like you said, pat your, pat yourself on the back for Big Victory. I don't think that's sufficient enough. I really don't. I mean, it's a quarter or more of our population at town. Um, and to play off of Merrily, BB's point, I think this is a little bit of stereotyping, but I, when I think of events in town that come to mind that can get targeted seniors at, I'm thinking of setting up a table at, um, Frosty's Bazaar. I go to Frosty's Bazaar. I don't think it's exclusive to, to, uh, seniors in town, but, I mean, seriously, one out of ten seniors, how many of them would go, if you pulled them aside and say, hey, you know, this exists? I'd say maybe five, and I think that's optimistic. Um, not to discredit anything that, that, uh, Mr. Rubino or others have done, but I think getting more of a word of mouth and an old-school approach to getting it out there may increase, um, you know, the seniors that we reach. I mean, the library was on, on the green this weekend promoting, um, you know, the education of, of, um, education in our town. I think we do it with seniors just in same fashion, set up a table, um, at events that they might be at and see if there's other folks that would like to, to be involved, so.
Okay, Counselor, uh, Counselor Grady?
Um, it's also important to, to note that this, the six hundred dollars is, is starting. The next year, you're seven hundred, next year, eight hundred, nine hundred, et cetera, et cetera. For people that are already in the program, this would bump them up three hundred dollars, correct, Jason?
Yep, well, they're at three hundred now, so you're gonna add whatever the difference is. So, yeah, double the initial investment. If that's the case.
The advantage of this, this program, you're gonna get an additional three hundred on top of what, what they have. So, this is, the six hundred dollars is a, is a starting point to get more people into the program. And from there, it builds. And, uh, and capping it at seventy-five percent of your property tax with no lien seems to me to be the right way to go.
Counselor Grady, any other comments?
Jacob, just real quick with a, a thought I wanted to finish with. Um, I, I do think having it at twenty-eight is too soon. I, I think that if this is gonna be well-rounded, it should be, uh, a thought of, um, step. However, I'm not someone who, who would rather not take a step, so I'd like to implement, but what, um, you wanna, what's your understanding?
Sure.
John, if you wanna implement, Mr. Grady. We do want to implement what John's saying, but, but also we really need to take a step back and change the outfit and have it be a little more well-rounded. I think we're just, we've got a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Counselor Nunez. Um, no, I'll, I'll just give my, my two cents. Um, I think that six hundred is good. I'd be open to increasing it more. The, our, my, and staff was, was on board with that. Um, I, I will, will say, um, I do have a bit of a concern about increasing the overall cap of the program, Joe. I, I totally hear where you're, where you're coming from. Um, but I do think, you know, included of an under sixty-five population or younger families trying to start out, who don't have a lot of assets, um, you know, and have to go and work to save a lot for their home and have to, have to pay the property taxes. And, um, I do wanna make sure that we're looking at the that end of the spectrum as well. Um, you know, we saw in the budget, um, we talked about cuts, uh, you know, three, four hundred thousand dollars, which would be equivalent to doubling the size of the program.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and in some cases, that didn't make the difference of a lot of voters. Um, so, I think it does matter. I, I'm totally in favor of the next council looking at this. I think that for the new council that gets sworn in, they should set an agenda item of the future to seriously consider raising the cap. But I think they should also just see what happens, um, with these new levels. Does it, um, result in, uh, you're getting pretty close to the cap? Is there still a huge amount of, um, unrealized potential, um, app, app value? Because as we know, people move or pass on. Um, that's not accounted for in the model. I don't really know. Uh, and we have a town some on three sources probably can't run all those different scenarios that we'd love to see. But I do think, um, that's just something that you need to, need to consider. Uh, but totally up on board on making this a, an iter, iterative process that does get reviewed once a council term, um, something to, that effect would be, you know, good. Yeah. Uh, Counselor Moran?
Um, Jason, I thought I saw this somewhere, but I can't remember off the top of my head. Do you have the average benefit of somebody in the program? That's a good question.
Yeah, our, um, our calculation on this spreadsheet is eleven forty-one. Average tax benefit a year.
Okay, so, so, so obviously, we're talking here about doubling the starting, like, the entry point. Um, but obviously, as we've discussed, right, that increases, that amount increases each year that you're in the program. So, the average benefit is eleven forty-one. And is it, if I'm remembering right, the average, um, property tax bill in town, is it around five thousand dollars, Jason?
Fifty-five thousand.
Or fifty-five?
Yeah, on that spreadsheet again, in the brown at the top, you'll see fifty-four ninety is the average tax bill, less the average benefit gives you an average tax bill of just under four thousand dollars.
I agree with the state.
Is that benefit, is that, yeah, the average for everybody or the average for seniors?
Just the people in the program.
Okay. So, you're talking about taking out, the average benefit takes out, you know, about a fifth or whatever of your. the average benefit takes out, you know, about a fifth or whatever of your, of your overall tax bill. Obviously, that can, the longer you're in the program, that can, can increase up to seventy-five percent of the overall bill. Jason, is there, if we were considering increasing the amount of the benefit to start, right now, we're talking about doubling it from three to six hundred. Is there an amount above the six hundred that you would feel comfortable with? Is there a point at which you, you, you have concerns about the solvency of the program?
Um, I, I think you guys can do whatever you would like to do. The programming can set the number wherever you want it to be. Once we start once we, once we start reaching the cap that we've set, though, on the individual tax bill, that's when all of a sudden we have to start doing a lot of calculations to just make sure that we're not going over that cap. And then making sure the tax bills go out properly. And that was a problem with the lowest tax, the original benefit that we had, which we changed two years ago.
But there's not an amount of, that, you know, if we were talking about increasing the three hundred dollars, there's not a number that you're, that, that you, that you'd be worried about. And that's fine if there's not.
No, and I mean, again, it's, it's your decision to make as the council to, to, to do what you would like to do. One thing I could tell you is that in looking at all these numbers and these folks that have been in the program for twenty-five years now, they're only realizing a hundred dollars per year. When Bob and I looked at this years ago, it was, I think the average was forty-seven dollars because the mill rate was barely moving. So as the mill rate barely moved, you're, you're not, you know, two percent from last year is a fifty-dollar change in your tax bill. It's the big jumps that this doesn't handle. So these people that have been in for all these, this long period of time, they're getting three thousand dollars off their current tax bill. However, from last year to this year, that hundred dollars doesn't, doesn't help them enough based on what's happened with inflation and things like that. So accumulatively, this is a great program. Yearly, you know, it doesn't exactly help you with your grocery bill, you know. So I think it's up to you guys to decide what to do with it. And if you set the parameters, I just am trying to keep them within those parameters, so.
In order for the amount of increases each year, does it have to be a set amount, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars? Can it be like a percentage of like, you know, the budget anchor, the average tax bill increased by X? So therefore, you know, to be, you know, it would somehow, the amount that would increase that year would somehow be tied to the amount that the budget, or the tax bill increased by. You see what I'm saying? So that it could help accommodate for Yeah, well, I, you know, we're trying to find a way to, to, obviously, since that is not worried, so I'm just saying, so how, you know, whatever you have. How do we accommodate, there's a concern that these is, is, right?
Yeah, that's, that's getting back to where we were before and then leaves it so you guys don't really have an accurate number.
We have a, we, we're, you're saying yearly, we have a year-over-year problem of not being able to accommodate big, big increases in taxes. So I'm looking to try to, to change that. So I'm hoping to increasing the amount year that it goes up. You know, if it's too difficult for staff to manage something complicated formula, then we can talk about like a flat dollar amount that that increases by. But I see the point of wanting to try to address difficult budget, so.
It's, I think it's trying to find the perfect balance between what the parameters say I have to fall within and how much you guys can give to our seniors, you know, that, that helps them. You know, I don't, I don't care if it's a thousand dollars year one, or if you change it to three hundred year one and two hundred year, every year after. I mean, eventually, it's just gonna reach the cap, and then everybody's gonna have a maxed out benefit, which means from one year to the next, they're not getting any benefit. You know, they're only getting that, say it's thirty-two hundred dollars, you're only getting that. And then the following year is only thirty-two hundred dollars while inflation happens, cost of living happens, and then you're not addressing that. At, at least in this case, we don't have, we only have very few that are at that cap. That's at six hundred, one hundred, and that would mean that year after year that that extra money that they don't have to spend on taxes would help them in some way. So, sh- short, story's short. You know, you guys can do what you wanna do and we'll, I'll make it work.
So we, so would you, just a question, were you proposing to amend the motion? Okay. Cause we have a motion on the floor, right? We, we seconded, and then you talked about possibly increasing yearly.
Yep.
Addition, so, so you were proposing to amend that original motion?
I think driving Chris's point. I mean, there has to be a way to find, I mean, Joe, you're the numbers guy, right? There has to be a way to find a relation, we, I mean, to, to put an ordinance in there, a subsequent section reading a movement equal to uh, the tax rate, that's beneficial, a beneficial number per year for, for a, 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 a living number.
Yeah, and I agree.
That's what I, that's what I'm trying to itch for, because we just forget it and it's too hard. Well, then
Yeah, no, I agree. That was my proposal too, and, you know, we can obviously do whatever we want as a council, but what I'm being told is that's not, that's too difficult to administer. But I agree, that's sort of what I was suggesting, right? And try to peg it to the average increase. But if that, that's too difficult to administer, still.
Who's, who, who would answer that question? Belita, is that too difficult? Like, is that explosive brain?
Cute calculation, yes, definitely.
Yeah.
You're asking every single, you know, recalculation every single year, you know, and with the starting benefit change in this step, you know, every year. It's just, you know, we know exactly where we're looking. It's just easier for assessors office to do that. And again, I just wanna mention one point I think we're missing here, that in our calculation, we assume only ten applicants.
Right.
Based on what we discussed, that could be more.
Right.
Forget that. So we're changing just the starting benefit and, you know, step benefit just a little bit slightly. And, you know, if we have more than ten applicants, that's gonna be looking different. So I just wanna mention that here.
Right.
That's, it's conservative, but at the same time, does not include, you know, like fifty applicants, we were saying, I think. So from ten to fifty, there's gonna be
Sub Bobby, I hear you raise a period of thoughts.
Yeah, I, I know it's unusual for me to chime in, but a hundred dollars came from swag of looking at the increase of town spending year over year. Keeping track of close to the inflation, two point eight percent. You apply that to the average tax bill of the folks who are qualifying the program at four thousand dollars, becoming pretty close to a hundred dollars. Right? That's where that's coming from. This year was extraordinary in that there was a shift, a significant shift in where you derive your income from, from the commercial to residents. So I'm hoping, I think we're all hoping, that that was a one-time event. So it really pivots off of what is the town spending doing? Ultimately. So if you can project that, then you can get an understanding of what is a fair and equitable annual increase in the program. Now, I'll hope pine for a moment. And I think Mr. Moran was talking about this as well, that there are a lot of young people who are working. And you know, everyone's struggling. And that tax bill, that one-off tax bill hit everybody uniformly. So this is the balancing act that the original committee tried to look at. Maximizing the benefit for the bottom third such that it was meaningful. And congratulations. Now you guys are trying to figure that out. What is the right balance? It get meaningful to your point, Mr. Shay. And yet balance the burden on the rest of the town. Maybe one way to look at this is if the average tenure in the program is ten years, at what point do you approach that seventy-five percent cap? Cause at that point, reading between the lines of what I heard from Jason, at that point, it becomes a manual calculation for every one of the folks in the program. He has a huge admin overhead for him to administer. That's why we changed the program two years ago. Jason and his team were spending an enormous amount of time trying to do this calculation. And at the same time, they weren't able to tell the applicant or the people in the program, what is your benefit gonna be? So I think you can look at this year over here. I would just caution you, in order your heart is, be careful. You can look at it next year.
Yeah, I'll just say, I I guess I think we definitely need to continue, council needs to continuously revisit this. That, that's, I think for, for tonight. I, I support the motion before Counselor Grady. I even you could do this, I'd even entertain a second motion after that to, you know, have the council express its desire to continue to look into this. Next term, we don't know how high that would be, cause it's a new council, but I think that increasing that starting benefit, especially the lien, can definitely be very impactful on interest more applicants. That's, that's one of those things that we don't really have a good estimate of that will impact the influence of people. But obviously, it would be in a positive way. So Over time, yeah. And I think we get a better feel for that over the year, for sure. So. Any other comments up on the motion? I think it'd be good to, to vote on it and if it's.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment because I want to just reemphasize that I think we're, we're trying to do exactly what Mr. Vino just said, which is try to find a decent balance here to really benefit the citizens and the residents that you talked about on the lower third of that belt curve, the people that are most were most impacted by the recent tax increase. I wanna, I want everybody to recall that I fought really hard to use just two hundred thousand dollars during the budget to help people across the town with their tax bills, and that was not considered viable. So so I think that if that was you know, that was, that was something that was would have had a little bit of benefit for everyone, including young people. Like you said, we're starting out, we're struggling. The, the percentage of older people that own their homes is very high. It's over eighty percent in talent. The people of, you know, thirty-five and under who own their homes is very low in talent. It's, it's below forty percent. The idea that the statistics give light to the fact that we are losing senior population because in two thousand, our percentage of seniors was a little over seven percent, between seven and eight percent. And now, based on the latest statistics, it's sixteen and a half, actually more. Based on your, you did households, not individuals. So there's a difference between households and individuals. So individuals, it's more like sixteen and a half percent, seventeen percent. It's, it's twenty-seven percent of households. Is that what you're saying? Based on the number of houses that you came up with divided by, so fourteen sixty-six divided by
The twenty-seven percent is actually the percentage of people who should qualify.
Based on their age?
Based on their age and their income. They call it the success rate.
So
That's what Mr. Newman would say is our success in tapping these people and say, hey, there's a program for participating.
So if we have fifty-four hundred homes in talent
Yeah.
And fourteen hundred and sixty-six.
Sixty-five plus households, yes.
Sixty, so that is twenty-seven percent of the households in talent.
I would say that's a coincidence.
It's a what?
It's a coincidence, that it's the same, but your point is
Oh, okay, okay. So we, we, that's why. So the point is that we are not losing senior population. They're not fleeing the town. In fact, since two thousand, we've actually seen an exponential increase in the number of seniors because they're aging in place, which is what we want them to do, right? Especially our zoning regulations were modified from two thousand on to make it easier for people to, to age in place with in-law apartments and other things that could benefit them. So I just wanna make sure that we that we are looking at this with all of the relevant facts before us, because there's some alarmism and I, and the, the statistics don't, don't bear that out completely. So that's mine.
If I'm misheard, I didn't mean to be flippant about coincidence.
And I didn't get it until you were, so I'm good with that.
If there are fifteen hundred, just round numbers, fifteen hundred sixty-five plus households.
Yeah.
The bottom third would be five hundred.
Yep.
The number of people participating in the program is a hundred and fifty-eight.
Right.
Hundred and fifty-eight is twenty-seven percent of five hundred.
Got it. So it just happened to be the same number. Thank you.
But it's still a miserable success rate. We should have five hundred households participating.
Right, which would you know, if we went from a hundred and fifty-eight to five hundred, that's a whole different calculus.
And that's why go cautiously.
Right.
And those are two different approaches, right? So one is what should the, what should the ordinance provide for? And then the other is how do we get to all the people that should qualify? How do we, how do we get them?
How do we get them to it?
And that's the
I like, I, I like the tabling idea. I
Well, I got a lot of time coming up, so.
Do you have a question?
Yes. Move to a vote. Counselor Butler?
Hi.
Counselor Hennin?
Hi.
Counselor Grady?
Hi.
Counselor Moran?
Hi.
Counselor Shay?
Hey.
Counselor Baby?
Hi.
And I as well. So that is a motion to set the public hearing with the amended version, amended language for October twenty-eighth. And thank you, Mr. Vino, for your insight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, and I'll see you in two years.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. We'll go to item A three, consideration of a resolution approving a five-year assessment extension for properties located at two fifty-nine Hartford Turnpike. An authorization for the town managers into, enter into an assessment agreement with the developers.
Thank you, Chair. This is for the council's, again, consideration to basically jump into a tax freeze, extend a tax freeze program for another five years for the storage facility at two fifty-nine Hartford Turnpike. With us is David Corcoran, our planner, Jason Lawrence, obviously, our assessor as well. This, it has been recommended to council to move forward with this proposal from the Economic Development Commission. That being said, Jason's against it. Dave and I are lukewarm on it as well, but understand that the, please, that the Economic Development Commission is for it. So it is for your consideration. David Corcoran's here for any explanation, kind of give a rundown. I'll have him do that right now as to what it is, and then we're, we're open for questions. So Dave, you wanna kind of give a, just a more clear rundown of what exactly this is?
Yeah, absolutely. So effectively, back in twenty eighteen, and, and I would note just for the council's reference that John Hettinger's here, he's the owner of the self-storage establishment. So if you have any questions for him, he's, he is here in the audience tonight. But, but yeah, I just wanna note effectively, six years ago now, we entered into a five-year assessment agreement with two fifty-nine Hartford Turnpike. This was at the old Sandra Register Building, which required a heck of a lot of remediation, environmental remediation, just to get to a occupiable space and then, and then a very large investment by the extra space storage folks to open up a business which has been successful in town. So what they've done is they've approached us and requested that we continue to freeze their tax assessment based on market conditions in the self-storage industry. Effectively, with the way the real estate market's gone, we, they've seen sort of a there, there's been less of a, there's less shift in housing right now. Folks are staying put, which means they're not using storage units, that's driving down occupancies and, and therefore driving down the amount of rent they're able to collect. So, so what they've proposed is given the significant capital investment they've made in the building, basically to freeze their assessment for five years at a reduced rate. at a reduced rate for the next two. And then, in their current proposal, it, it would have them be frozen for one additional year into the next revaluation of year five. So, um, you know, the council can talk about that. I know, I think staff's opinion is probably to at least cut that back to, to a four-year agreement so that at least the, the new revaluation was captured. And then I think Jason has some additional thoughts on, maybe from his perspective, what, what makes sense to, to allow somewhere.
Do you want to hear from me?
Yes.
So I talked to John at length about their five-year performance as far as how commercial properties are valued. And we dug kind of deep into their occupancy rates and how the property is performing. In my opinion, they're stabilized over three years at an average of 91.7% occupancy. I know he has issues with that. That occupancy, although yes, it's high, his rents are lower because they're entry rate units, so it takes time for those units to become long-term tenants. And that's when, you know, there, he feels they're a little bit more stabilized at that point. So I, you know, it's my opinion that the property is for the type of property it is and what is expected out of it. I think it is pretty near stabilized at this point. And that's, I think, the difference of opinion.
Jason. Just I'll turn it over to questions unless any other town staff have anything to add. Councillor Wrenn?
Do we know, does the Economic Development Commission just give us like a favorable, like they, they think this is a good idea? Or do they tell us, do they tell us why?
Okay, good question, so I was gonna actually jump on that. Dave, Dave will give some clarity. In a, just a synopsis, it gives the impression that Tolland is a business-friendly town. That being said, there are also volunteers, they work very hard, and sure, there are an area of expertise, they're mine, to provide those recommendations. And they're looking at holistic things, not just tax rolls in year two, you know, essentially. If you do consider it, again, please weigh heavily on what Jason's saying. In five years, we have a rebound. And we saw, we're hoping the commercial comes back. If we extend this beyond the rebound, we lose that. So, and so if anything, the four years, Dave, if you want to explain the EDCs, if I, if I missed anything, what their, their philosophy was in, in recommending.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think that's part of it. They, they identified three reasons specifically in their sort of motion to assert benefits. So they, they met, or at least not a quorum of them, but a couple of commissioners met with Mr. Hettinger in executive session in either July or August and, and looked at their financial numbers. And so their, their readout was a little bit different, I guess, than, than Jason's. Their, their reasoning officially was, they believe that there is a dramatic downturn in the market demonstrated by the applicant's financial statements. Not extending the abatement could endanger operations and present a negative impact on the town's tax base. And generally, as Brian was getting to the idea of sort of promoting a business-friendly image and, and supporting a viable business versus risking, you know, another empty commercial building in town.
Yeah, no, thank you, I'll just say that, I think that's, I mean, that's, that's always the, the balance, the hard part that we have to try to strike the plug and zone all the other device, right, right? Which is we want to encourage business development in our town, and we want the businesses that are here to be successful. But we have the balance that with needing to generate revenue to run the town, right? And so that's always a hard balance. Can I just, one question? Brian, you mentioned, like, not wanting to extend it out past the next rebound if there was going to be an extension. So would that be, so not more than four years, is that what that?
Yes, and then I'd ask them in advance of this to, to come up with a wording or a resolution if it has a, I don't think we covered it, if you don't mind. Chris, Dave, what is the actual hard number impact of this?
This says two years.
Yes, we could explain that, so, so it's a, it's, it'll, it'll stay for, stay for two years and then stop there. After that, so Dave, you want to explain that, both of those things?
Yeah, yeah, so if you read the, the text of the agreement, what it does is it freezes the values for the, the next two grant list at, at 3.2 million and 3.45. And then it freezes it at the current assessed value in years three, four, and five. And, and our understanding is that year five jumps into the next rebound, do I have that right, Jason?
Yeah, so 29 would be the next rebound, which we would come out with a number four. So I wouldn't want it to spill into that fifth year because we would want to revisit the valuation at that point.
Thank you. Councillor Shane?
Yeah, so I, I don't know if it's in the document or not, does it, does it show the dollar impact of freezing the valuation for an extra?
Yes, two years.
And how much?
Go ahead, Dave.
Pardon?
What's the dollar impact?
Yeah.
Over the, over the.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, so Jason's got it pulled up and I've got it as well. It is, it would drop the, for the current grant list, it would drop the reduction in taxes owes from 108.75 to 87,000, and then in 2026, from 1,875 to 93,806. If the mill rate were to stay the same, most likely it would go up next year, which would increase that number. So that comes out to, you know, in the ballpark at $20,000 or so.
Now, those, those two years?
Total, yeah, yeah, so the, you know, 13,000 in year one, or a little over 13,000 in year one and a little bit, about $7,000 in year two. If the mill rate were to stay the same next year, which, you know, most likely would not.
But then it's frozen.
But then it's, then, then they would be frozen, they're paying the full assessed value through years three, four, and five, but year five, the value could conceivably change for the rebound process. And I wouldn't know if John is here, he has his hand up, I don't know. I hope to the council, if you want to hear from him.
I'm not opposed to having him speak, but I would like to just give council members a chance to ask all their questions first, so that they can have an informed opinion. But he also had a chance for you, so. All right, I just had a quick question because there's a lot of material here, I'm trying to parse through it. So the initial proposal that the EDC brought to council was to extend it to increase the valuation through five years? And that would include the next revaluation, is that what I heard, Dave? Or is it?
So, so year five gets into the next rebound, yes, by one year.
And that's what they brought forth, but Jason picked off the hold on, we got a rebound.
Okay, yeah, I want to, they said it a little too long. Okay, and I'll just add, you know, I, I sat through the two meetings where they did have discussion, it was a pretty in-depth discussion, the EDC did ask some pretty creative questions of the business owner. And about the market and things, so I think they certainly did a good job vetting this proposal. But obviously, it also gets ultimate authority to, as to what to decide. All right, if not, I can let John Hettinger speak, if he'd like to say anything for the record.
Yes, well, thank you very much for, I'm, I'm unable to turn my video on, but I'm probably sparing all of you that. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here this evening and, and obviously for your consideration of this proposal. I would, I would try to clarify, our intention is not to extend into the next rebound period. I, I suppose our, our perhaps overly simplistic view was the current appraised value, I believe, under the agreement that's in place is, is 4.2 million. I believe that Mr. Lawrence's stabilized appraised value is, is 5.3 million. As, as Jason mentioned, we had a, from my perspective, a thorough, respectful, in-depth conversation. And I think his approach is, is thoughtful and reasonable. What we are trying to, to do as opposed to seeing our taxes grow, again, mill rates will change, of course. But seeing that, that bump, say 25% next year, meet that out as eight to nine percent per annum increases over the next couple of years and then get to the full value that Mr. Lawrence has proposed, say by year three. And it is a quick, sort of, you know, how we got here in a, in a very, very quick. We, we got our certificate of occupancy for this building in the third week of March 2020. So right as the COVID tsunami was sort of hitting. And that led to a, a much softer initial lease-up than we would have conventionally underwritten. And as we're getting our physical occupancy stabilized, and, and Jason alluded to this earlier, before you kind of gain any real traction or pricing power, inflation obviously spiked and, and interest rates rose faster than at any point in, in modern US history. We, we've all dealt with that, we've all endured that. That's not unique to storage necessarily. But storage derives a huge amount of its demand from the housing market. And that precipitous rise in interest rates created, you know, a, a much discussed lock-in effect which has really tamped down migration and home sales and moving. And that has, has obviously had a, a significant effect, effect on the demand for our product. So it's just been a, a little bit of a challenging operating environment, to say the least. With that being said, I think these issues are cyclical and not secular. I think that, that the biggest concern for me as an operator is, is oversupply and that's not something that is prevailing in Tolland. So what we're proposing is to, to try to, you know, take modest, if you will, high single-digit tax increases or assessment increases over the next couple of years, get to the fully stabilized value at year three as opposed to next year. We, we continue to, I mean, since our first meeting with the EDC, I think we've had 177 move-outs to, I have to check the numbers, but I don't know, maybe 80 move-ins. So things, things continue to get worse, and, and physical occupancy is one part of the picture. But as Jason alluded to, if, if you lose somebody who is, you know, renting a 10 by 10 for, you know, 100 bucks, and you replace them with somebody who's renting for 50 bucks, your physical occupancy isn't changing, but your economic occupancy has gone in half. And that's a dynamic that we've seen a lot. So very much, we're, we're appreciative and respectful and sensitive to the, the broader dynamics around revaluations and grant lists this year. This is not something that we're trying to ask for capriciously. We have provided a lot of information and we've had in-depth discussions with the EDC about the specifics of our operations. And we're trying to be thoughtful and measured with this because we would like to be operating in Tolland for a long time. And we've appreciated the opportunity to be here over the last several years. It has not gone totally according to plan, but again, I, I don't think that's forevermore. We're just trying to, to be measured and thoughtful and kind of get to the next step. And I guess the way we, we would view stabilization as, as perhaps slightly different than others, but obviously respect where everybody's coming from on this. So thank you again for, for having me and, and happy to answer any other questions, but appreciate the thoughtful conversation.
Just a note, clarifying question, I saw there's two appendix As. We just get clarification upon what each one of these appendix As are. I'm sure it's in this large agreement, but for the sake of time, so we're trying to reach here, find out what it is, get clarified.
Yeah, so, so the first appendix A goes with the new agreement. The second appendix A is the appendix A for the original agreement. So, so the appendix A that is on page 29 of your package is the one that's being proposed today.
The higher one? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a B.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. Dave, just one other question, so we did our overall, the tax abatement ordinance, and I don't believe the changes we made specifically to that mentioned extensions, but do you think the EDC, if their evaluation of this proposal, at least all kind of the spirit of those recommendations, to, you know, look at what the business's expenses were and balance that out against the potential benefit of letting the business enter into an abatement agreement with the town?
Yeah, I, I, I believe that the, the, the reasoning for which, so I guess to the extension question, the, our ordinance allows for up to 10 years of tax abatement and the original abatement agreement had a provision in it which allowed for extensions. So, so where you feel like we're on solid ground to grant one up to that 10-year mark if, if the council so wants to. As to philosophically whether this makes sense, you know, I, I would say that the applicant provided to the EDC the documentation that's required in the new ordinance for them to be able to make a determination. And ultimately, you know, the way the ordinance is written, it's, it's relatively open-ended, but, but I would say they, they followed the spirit of it.
Okay. And this is an extension, so we haven't obviously calculated revenue, all that for the new fiscal year, so really kind of the way to look at it is more of like an opportunity cost thing, money would be coming back up on the books, it's not like we're, it's not like we lost a grant that we already have for $20,000, kind of, I'm trying to get at, right?
I, I believe that that would be accurate, Jason, correctly approached.
Yeah, their current tax bill sits at about $80,000 with a ramp up to 102,000 coming on this current, next year with a 2% mill rate change. So if that were the case, yeah, we would realize 20,000 plus more in taxes next year. Whereas they're looking for about $88,000 tax bill, roughly with those numbers. So they'll realize some savings next year and obviously the following year. But that's above and beyond the money that we're already collecting.
Thank you. Okay. This is not a public hearing, I kind of correct, Brian?
No.
All right. So I guess usually we have to get a recommendation from account, from staff as to what direction they'd like to put us in. Here, it's a little bit more open-ended, so I'll just go around and just want to get, get everyone's thoughts up on it. Councillor Buckler, I guess?
Um, I have a concern about the five-year period.
Yeah.
I think maybe dropping that down to four years might make sense. And that, I'll have very strong opinions one way or another.
Okay.
I would say whatever looks the most appealing to businesses and, you know, attracted to town. I think whatever that is, we need to do it. We can't, we can't have another year where residents are paying taxes here like, like we did this past year. We need, you know, businesses to look at, this town and it's, you know, lipstick, nice dress, the whole thing, and we need to make it look good because you're not going to look at it, you know?
Councillor Wrenn?
Yeah.
Uh, Councillor Rainy?
I support a four-year idea.
What is the benefit of that?
The fifth year is the revaluation year, correct?
Right.
So this is pre?
We don't want to lose the rebound.
Right.
You know, we want them to now, you know, stay pace with all the other businesses, especially if we expect the commercial slide back.
So we do four to land right before the rebound here, I agree with that.
Councillor Wrenn?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I certainly agree, I, I don't want to go beyond the four-year, four-year period. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a tough balance, I definitely want, I want Tolland to be business-friendly to councillor Wrenn's point. And I understand the business owners sort of desire to sort of step into this to the full valuation. So, but, you know, I'm definitely wanting to consider the four-year option. So, you know, I'm definitely wanting to consider the four-year option.
Councilor Shane?
Sure. I think Mr. Hedinger also agreed that he was, his intention was to just go up to the revalue. So he's he's agreed on four years as well, so I think that's a that's easy. That's an easy thing to modify, and as Mr. Union pointed out, I think we do have to be business-friendly here, because the history I've had with with working local politics, Tallent really hasn't been. So this is sort of a nice gesture, I think, on the part to to do that.
Kind of, sir, maybe?
I agree. I I agree with the four-year and not and and not having extended to the revalue. Do we need to change the language then? We would just need to change the language from five years to four years in the proposal?
Dave, and Jason, what'd you guys come up with with wording?
Yep, I've I've got a draft motion. I'm happy to pull up on my screen if if the council wants, or or I can read it.
Just read it if you could, Dave.
Yep, so I would say, "Get resolved if the town council approves the attached assessment schedule extension for the property located in two fifty-nine Hartford Turnpike amended to reduce the extension to four years, fixing the value for year one at thirty-three million, two hundred thousand dollars, year two at three million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and years three and four at three million, seven hundred and ten thousand dollars, and authorize the town manager to enter into an assessment agreement with developers."
You do? Um, I just throw in like a couple of cents, and then someone wants to make that motion, they can. I I agree with the four-four-year. I think this is on the plan. We all kind of know that one of the reasons why Tallent has budget struggles is because our our tax base is so heavily residential. We basically don't have that. Same fix tend to to have a little bit more help fiscally, so I think showing that we're we're open to business is good. And like I mentioned, the conversation that the EDC committee had was was very robust. It certainly wasn't, well, wasn't, it wasn't well thought out, I should say. So I think that proposal work looking at is good. So if that, I'll entertain a motion to the the language that Dave just said, so I'll move by.
I have to remember all the words.
Second, second by Councilor Shane. We'll all hear it person. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, extension space. All right, so that motion is adopted. Okay, moving on, item eight-four, consideration of a resolution to authorize the town manager to finalize the sale of the town-owned parcel at Laurel Ridge Road to Brian and Jennifer Zadrowski, and leave one lawler road for six thousand dollars. Set a public hearing there on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Chair. So early on, when I was brought here to Tallent, I met with Dave, and we decided there was a lot of pieces of property on on our books that were, for lack of a better term, kind of sort of dead properties that we wanted to get off and work with the Land Acquisition Committee. Dave, Dave Portman did excellent job inventorying everything. This is one of the pieces of property that we looked to get off of our books and sell to a resident and get on the rolls. So Dave, I have Dave Portman here. Dave, you you want to add anything to that?
Nope, I I would say this one's pretty straightforward. This is a piece of property that we acquired for a small amount of money twenty-one years ago. It doesn't appear that we have any need for it. And we've got an offer to buy it for the appraised value, so.
Any questions? I'll just say thank you, Dave, for pushing so hard up on this. This is one of the submissions. We've actually been able to see some results over the course of the term.
More comment?
Yeah. Um, all right, I'll entertain a motion to move this to public hearing.
So moved.
By Councilor Ann, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just, sorry, I'll just say that, sort of equate what Council of Murray said. This is a good, you know, good thing. We're trying to find sort of like random one on properties that are on our, just sort of sitting on our books or not on our books. So getting this out so to to probably receive it back, generate some more tax coverage is a great thing, so. Can we also instruct the the assessor's office to contact these residents as these, as they buy these properties and let them know they have the option to combine them onto their current property?
I think that already happens.
Is it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Right, because otherwise they get charged the first two acre for each parcel.
Yep. Yes. Yep. Um, any other discussions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Like this unanimous, that a resolution is adopted. Item eight-five, consideration of a resolution for a supplemental appropriation of eleven thousand, nineteen dollars and six cents for the Secretary of State's early voting grant. The project will be funded one hundred percent by grant funds.
Great, thank you, Chair. So we got a grant from the state. We'd like to accept it. As you know, everyone went to early voting. It's been very successful, embraced by our registrar's office and the town. With that, we got a grant from the state for just under twelve thousand dollars. I would ask that you allow us to accept it.
Questions or? Sounds like a good thing. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution. So moved by Councilor Granny, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Shane, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, um, moving to item eight-six. Uh, SRO or School Resource Officer Current Status and Discussion Regarding Next Steps. I'll turn over to Brian to give us some rundown of where we are with this.
Thank you, Chair. So there's no no resolution or anything to to vote on here, but this is just something that we want to continue to shine a light on. There's been recent discussions between members, with the, I'm sorry, with the Dr. Willett and myself, and the Connecticut State Police, and Jacob, I believe, and Chris, that were involved in discussions as well. And some some people on the board of that in regards to school safety. There's been a desire to do something to get, given the climate in in the world, and everything that's going on, a desire to do something to get some police coverage in our schools. We, the town, but specifically the Dr. Willett and the Board of Ed are trying, are in the process of hiring an SRO. When I say SRO, I mean non-state trooper, an SRO hired by the town Tallent to work in our schools. In order to do that, we had to become accredited or at least start the accreditation process. We are finishing up Tier One of said accreditation process, which the town is is funded. In the meantime, we looked at the safety and activity, safety of our town, activity of our troopers, consider a lot of things. And in regards to the immediacy, last week, as you saw, we we pulled our administrative trooper off of general patrol in town and put him into our schools rotating around at the at the direction of Dr. Willett. So we still, we have still three resident troopers on patrol with our admin doing, still doing his admin stuff as needed, but also patrolling the schools. And he's, we intend on him being there to this point to November fifteenth, and hopefully by that time, we'll be able to hire an SRO. Now, the SRO was not funded as a part of last year's budget. However, due to some variations in the staffing of the Connecticut State Police, we did have some savings last year, as you know, you know. When a junior trooper takes over for a senior trooper, there's some attrition savings there, among other things. And we do have some money to fund for an SRO through the end of the year. I've discussed that with with Dr. Willett. If if there are any shortcomings, we're we're confident that we can bridge those shortcomings in budget. Dr. Willett, myself, and Mike Wilkinson will meet later this week or early next week to go forward with the posting, looking at the the salaries. There was some discussion on that today, how much it will cost. And we'll look look to post the position for a a SRO full-time with benefits to be in our schools moving forward. And so with that, I can, if if there are any questions, I I can try to provide an answer as best I can.
Questions from councilors? Councilor Ann, go ahead, Councilor, Council of Buckler.
Um, so you said we have some savings in the budget, and that's how we're going to be paying for part of this?
Yep.
Where where are the savings coming from?
State police. The state, so so let's say, let's let's use round numbers. We budgeted six hundred thousand dollars for our troopers. But it only costs five hundred and sixty, so we have forty thousand left over. Because we assume based on the troopers that we had, the years they had on, but then there's movements within there, there's there's different things with attrition where we're able to see. Now we have a super junior guy in the admin role as opposed to, say, Kevin Ackman, when he was there. So we have some some shifts in there in the cost, so that's where the savings came from.
So is the savings coming from Ackman's leave or?
Other, the totality of everybody, not not just him.
Is, and you've gotten data recently about crime rates, traffic stops in the Tallent area?
I have.
Okay. Anything in those, in that data shows anything concerning as far as crime rates, are they going up or traffic stops going up, are they going down?
Are you asking if I'm going to be concerned if we lose a trooper to to go on the SRO that our town will be any less safe? My answer would be absolutely not.
So that was my question?
Yes.
Okay. So this won't be a detriment of Tallent, you moving a resident trooper into the schools?
I I agree absolutely, and I, you know, I have some experience in this field of public safety. And in looking at the data, looking at the statistics, and knowing what I know coming from law enforcement, I don't, I don't think this will have a great impact at all on public safety. And in fact, moving him to our schools temporarily to get hire someone full-time, I think is is a good use.
And total amount we need to fund this till mid-November, or are we funding this half that?
Well, we would need to fund it from mid-November till the end of the school year.
Okay.
And we don't know what that exact number is, because we don't, we haven't decided on how we're going to post it, what the salary is going to be. We can ballpark it, you know, at thirty to thirty-three dollars an hour. It's kind of the general that you see out there plus benefits.
So what are we approving right now?
There's nothing to prove. It's just, it's just a discussion.
Where's the funding coming from?
From the state police, the leftover money from the state police.
And it, but it covers it a hundred percent?
We'll look at that. We don't, again, we don't know what the cost is going to be, but it's in the ballpark. And if if there's extra, you know, I talked to Dr. Willett, you know. There was a talk today around six thousand dollars that that they might have to come up with somewhere to help fund the SRO. This has nothing to do with the resident trooper. This is this, we hire a full-time SRO post eleven fifteen, if we can get him hired by eleven fifteen. But if if we're looking at the numbers, and I was looking at them today, that that forty might actually cover it, so. And it's
That can do it?
Yeah, and it's within our rules, or, you know, we we can move that money, you know, it's it's within the police policing budget.
Could we use something like the campus use tax to kind of cover any additional costs? So if you're saying there's a, if there's a couple extra thousand dollars, could we use something like that just to kind of pay for the whole thing?
I believe that that police salary is actually prohibited
Okay.
from the campus.
Yeah, it would be a conflict with this, yeah.
I don't know. I don't know what their reasoning was.
Okay, I thought safety was included.
I think this is safety is, but I think salary was
Okay.
not.
All right.
I can look though, but I'm happy to.
So what is the ballpark for, if you were, if we didn't have any money to, like, the forty thousand dollars to shift around? What would the ballpark be to fund a SRO through the rest of the year? We were hiring?
We haven't gotten to that yet. We we have to meet with Mike Wilkinson and HR to determine, you know, fringe and everything, but that we're thinking thirty to thirty-three dollars an hour is the average, and it's, you know, it'll be two months off, July and August.
Pay.
What's that?
On pay.
Well, it's going to be the, you know, the basic salary we'll come up with.
Okay.
And how do they want, you know, how they, how are we going to, you know, pay that out? Some some school security, they can give you the option to to cut it out throughout the year or just during those months.
Any other questions, Councilor Granny?
No.
Councilor Murray?
Yeah, I just wanted to back up for one second and just sort of, because I don't think, I mean, we've talked about this as a council sort of generally. But just to sort of get to sort of why, sort of where we're at, and so Jacob and I and 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 Brian met with Walt and Tony and Jake, Tony Holt and Jake Galschen from the Board of Ed. I appreciate that Jake Galschen reached out, sort of expressing, bringing this, keep making sure that this was still front of mind on our attention, making sure that school safety was top of mind, especially in light of some recent events that have happened along the way, to make sure our schools are safe. So we had that discussion, and that's when you know, glad to see that that Brian, appreciate that we had one of our resident troopers in this in this school since, I think, last Monday. Just to sort of provide sort of that immediacy, immediate response. And so I just want to make sure, I think that we should, obviously, so the our resident trooper that's currently there is there till about the middle of November. So we want to make sure that we get an SRO hired by approximately that timeframe. And then I would think we would need to fund it through that fiscal year, right, Brian?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, right?
Sorry. I said, yeah, slipped me.
Oh, no, no. No, that, no, that's good. Um, and so I obviously, I just want to make sure that 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 is, that that's accomplished. And so we don't need to take any action as a council to make sure that is accomplished. There's nothing we need to approve.
Correct, but I would ask to keep down the road in your sights, because we don't want to hire a cop.
Sure.
Get him in here and then not fund it.
Agree.
Next year. So so yes, that's it. That that is, that is nothing, this is just, let's discuss it. Just so you guys know what's happening here in town. And the reason that November fifteenth, that is a round number as our admin, our permanent admin got deployed. He'll be back soon. Then there's a decompression time, for lack of a better term, I don't think the exact term is, before he gets back. And so we're trying to predict when he's going to come back. That's where we want to have it done.
Got it. And so you mentioned already, I think you said that our administrative trooper is is the trooper that's currently in the schools until approximately November fifteen, and he's also able to do whatever administrative function he's he has to do, like absolute impacted, okay. Yeah, no, and so I, so your point is well taken. I think, yeah, it's definitely something that the council needs to have in mind. You know, we don't, like you said, we don't want this to be something that's like a one-year thing, and then then it goes away. I just think that it's important that we do, you know, that we we make progress on actually accomplishing this now so that it happens. And then, you know, so based on, you know, the the funding that you're talking about, then obviously the next council should be caught instead of sort of what steps to take to sort of ensure that that can continue moving forward. But I think it's a really good thing, and it's a really important thing that we accomplish now. I thank Council of Murray and 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 the Board of Ed and everyone for for trying to move towards, I think, a good solution for our schools. That's really important. So, thank you.
I'll just add on, because as part of this conversation, it's like the the time it took between like our initial, like, small headcount meeting, just to say this is a concern, to the time we got a trooper in the schools is pretty fast, especially for government standards. So I think it was really exciting to see that, and I do definitely appreciate all the staff work that happened to make sure that happened. I think when I was on the Board of Ed, I had mentioned kind of the little idea, like, have a trooper who's like work out of the schools part-time, or is he there?
Yeah.
And and didn't go anywhere this time, or that time, but it it did this time, and I think it's great. I guess, yeah, I I completely agree with what's been said that this needs to be an ongoing top priority. You know, every year's a tough budget year, but but student safety is so critically important. So I'd say, you know, it's it's using the crime data that we get to help inform our decisions about how best to deploy our public safety resources, and definitely, I think, the next council needs to look at making sure that this position can be funded in perpetuity. So that's great. I guess, Brian, if there's anything that changes regards to, you know, a need for supplemental appropriation or something like that. Because whether to figure out what makes the most sense and bring it to council is appropriate. But it's good to hear that there seems to be attrition funding that should cover most of it for three-quarters of a fiscal year.
Yeah, continue going around. Sure. So two things, I remember we had discussions similar to what you just said. That we said, why is there a police officer in our school? Now, it's impossible to handle it done, and now I hear that we did have a police officer that ultimately did go to our school. So I'm glad that that actually got done, despite the fact that we heard it couldn't be done. So that's major plus. Is there any issue with the state trooper budgets on the town budget, correct?
Yes.
And the SRO is on the Board of Ed budget, right?
Historically.
Is it okay, I mean, is it okay to take money from the town budget and now shift it?
We can, we, well, we can, it's for police services. And so, yes, we're doing it. It's just And so, yes, we're doing it, it's just, I believe, you know, in, in the future, it should, the Board of Ed should look at funding, and it's their cop. While they have control over him, I don't have any say over what he does on a day-to-day basis, it's, it's for their protection. Um, but that's a philosophical approach for you, for, um, council and, and the Board of Ed.
Yeah, are we, are we bending rules doing that, cause we, we approved the budget for both Tallinn and Board of Ed, and now we're switching funds around.
I, I, I already asked, but I will, I will double check again that we're able to use that money for law enforcement.
It's just like you can already sheet, well, I mean, check, but is the, is the rationale that? As it stands, you can sort of use money within line items or whatever, like, I feel like.
Yes, within departments.
Yes, of this public.
Yep, and he will actually, that, that SRO will technically be working under the state police. So he, he'll be basically, he's a town employee working under the state police, that's how that works.
So.
That's how post requires us to hire a police officer, the question is standards and trainings of the state, go ahead.
So this question should then, this SRO actually get a town budget, since we're bouncing these numbers around.
Again, that's for. Council and Board of Ed to decide, not the town manager.
Alright, yeah, we could just double check that, we're okay with taking money from the original budget.
Concur.
You also just, um, let us know once, um, it's, the job's posted, or when it's gonna be posted, once you have all that.
Sure.
Um, I, I don't like the fact that we don't have SROs in our school. In our schools, and, um. I don't wanna see us do anything where that, we get hung up on that. So, it, I, I just looked up thirty-three dollars an hour, forty-hour work week, fifty-two weeks a year. Is sixty-eight thousand dollars. Could we take seventy thousand, up to seventy thousand dollars out of the unassigned fund balance? And with the, with the goal of offsetting it using the forty thousand that Brian talked about. And ju- just to get this ball rolling, get, make sure there's nothing that hangs us up. And gets, you know, some help in our schools.
So I think we'd only be funding three quarters of the fiscal year, and then it would go and go into that.
So whatever that up to is, just to. Just to make sure we're, we're doing.
I don't know if we're gonna need a penny more, but if we do, I don't know if we can get it out of, can we? We probably could legally pull it out of, uh, unassigned fund balance, but that would need discussion. Yeah, council to do that, so that'd be on you.
Yeah, I mean, the, I, the, the goal would be not, not have to use it, but to appropriate money, so we don't. Get hung up on any issues, no pitfalls.
We're yet to sit with Mike Wilkinson and HR and determine the costs. So I'm kind of, you know, we're on, I'm out in front of my skis a little bit here.
Okay. I think maybe the, the spirit of it would be, I think everybody at this table and on the Board of Ed wants. And we don't wanna get hung up on. Details, for lack of a better term, so I think if there is a funding shortfall, I think, um, and I know you will, but. Uh, we're with you, Lita, to kind of figure out what makes sense, and we'll. Um, and, you know, we wanna just keep the ball rolling, so, and if that needs to come back to council, then we can have that conversation.
Yep.
Yeah.
Council Murray?
Yeah, I just wanna just echo what you mentioned, and something that you said earlier, you know. The, one thing that can be frustrating with government is, you know, the pace of things, and that's true at every level of government, and so. One, I'm very appreciative of how quickly that, that, um, staff moved to sort of make sure that we had, you know, uh. Additional safety for our schools, say, um, and, uh, for me, um, I, you know, as Jacob mentioned. The, the priority is making sure the schools are safe, and so, obviously, we have to, you know, however refunding this, it has to be within the bounds of what we're legally allowed to do, but. Um, knowing that there is an urgency to wanting to make sure that that is accomplished, I think is, is important, and so, appreciate that, I know you, um. Have experience in that and you share that, so, you know, appreciate that, so if there's any, obviously, any, any. So, just let us know as soon as we can, so we can do whatever we can do.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to follow it up with just, um, something, you know, Judge Yalashan was, um, very concerned after the most recent school shooting. Um, she raised a concern on the Board of Ed, I know it's been something Alex has brought up a million times over on town council, so I just wanted to thank him for continuing. To push that forward, um, and to Council Moran and Council Murray for, um, kind of putting the wheels in motion to get this done. Um, so I think this is a good thing that we finally got this, um, settled, and we have a police officer in the schools now.
Thank you. I just wanna say, well, I mean, you guys have heard me talk ad nauseam, but I really don't wanna talk about it anymore, um. Honestly, but I do wanna thank Chris, um, he's someone that I've called a lot to kind of just board vomit out and, and that ideas through. I just, with the, with the council that's coming up, this to play off of John's point, this is money that shouldn't be touched. So sick of Democrat, Republican, well, we're gonna use it as leverage, cause he really wants it, no. This needs to be money that we allocate no matter what. That's not touched. That's utilized by the town, for the town, for the town schools, not Board of Ed, not Brian's budget. Towns, school, and our kids, that's what I would like to see, and if there's a way to do that for using fun money, it should be done. Without, without hesitation. It sounds like a slight for me to say, I'd rather have my kid not play in a tuba than be safe, but that's at least my sentiments of it. I, I'd rather her play the tuba and be safe, but that's a discussion for next council. I don't wanna see this money touched, it shouldn't be, we should have four. Troopers in our schools, or four SROs in our schools. That's like barely the last thing I wanna say about, but I do appreciate Brian's ability to utilize and, and move when, when we needed to fast. And obviously, um, Jacob and Chris kind of taking my fervency in. Utilizing it a little bit better in, in actual, um, practice, so, thanks.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, everyone who worked up on this, make it happen. All right, um, that brings us to the last action item of the agenda, which is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissioners, um. Tristan, Joe, you wanna follow us through this, anything you know?
Uh, there's just, there, there's a slew of them, uh, again, as, as Joe and I always do, thank you to Sarah Beth, um, for ensuring that we keep. Keep all of our volunteer boards and commission staff to, as much as we can, so a lot, I think, most of these reappointments, there's a couple of, or maybe one appointment, so. There's three reappointments to the Tallinn Public Library Foundation, which, uh, we heard a little about earlier under eight point one. There's an appointment to the Tallinn Nonprofit Housing Corporation, three appointments to the Veterans Recognition Commission, three reappointments to the Tallinn Veterans Recognition Commission. Four reappointments to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, uh, reappointment to the.
You just left.
Fence viewer?
Yeah, it was Bob Bino.
Well, actually, I, I, maybe actually, my wife is already, what is our fence viewer?
Yeah. Maybe my first question when I got hired, what, it's fantastic, you know, there's a dispute over a fence, property lines, he goes and looks at it, and he does.
And he like arbitrates that or whatever.
Here it is, provides an opinion, yep.
Well, we're very grateful to offer you.
I'm sure he's very good.
Yes, yes, um.
I aspire to be the fence viewer.
Right, right, we can all put that on our goals, um, and then two reappointments to be tree wardens, um, so. Uh, obviously, uh, and I, I know Sarah Beth has done a lot of work reaching out to all these individuals for the reappointments to confirm that they want to continue on in their service. And as always, we're very grateful to all the volunteers we have, um, and, uh, yeah, I think that's all I have.
Yeah, I, I echo Council Moran's sentiments, that it's fantastic that we have the people in Tallinn who are willing to, to re-up these, uh, these voluntary positions, it's great. Great to see.
Fence viewer's gotta be like a little heritage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sounds like that.
Yeah, it's from colonial, right, yeah.
I want it, for a long day, I wanna be the fence viewer, I'm serious.
It is, for real.
You have to like ring a bell.
You can hear it.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Right.
Before we had GPS, or before we had electronic survey equipment.
There was bomb.
There had to be, there had to be people that were able to sell these disputes.
Right, right.
Didn't cases pass.
Didn't Tallinn have a war with cops, or were over a line, over a property?
We did.
Did?
This house behind us, the gambrel style roof, that was originally a cabinetry. Sounds like we have our next fence viewer.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, the gambrel style roof white house behind us is one of the oldest houses of Tallinn, besides Benton. And that's seventeen. It's old, I can't remember the exact date, but when Kayla and I were looking at it, she reminded me. That this house's date is closer to the landing of Columbus than right now.
Wow.
It's right. So I did that math in my head, and my head hurt.
Yeah, oh, yeah, great, that we have all these good volunteers and, um.
Yep.
With that, I'll, I'll entertain emotion to a point. So, led by Council Murray, seconded by Council Greenie, any discussion? Who was in fever?
Hi.
Hi, hi. That was unanimous, there you are, pointed. There is no old business, um, so that brings us to report of the town manager.
Great, thank you. Uh, let me just open with, uh, election days, November fourth, uh, six to eight PM at the regular polling location, Senior Center, Rec Center. Uh, however, early voting starts on October twenty-second, extends through November second, every day, including weekends, so every day from October twentieth to November second. Ten AM to six PM, Town Hall, Conference Room V. There's also extended hours on the twenty-eighth and thirtieth, which go from eight AM to eight PM. Our, our, um, early voting has been very successful, uh, the. Uh, Council McGrany, I know you'd said the rec board did not, um, have a forum, I, we, I would like them to hopefully form soon, as there's. We are, I have started my capital improvement projects, and the rec director brought some stuff forward, I just wanna bounce it off. Uh, the rec, um, mission there to, uh, rec board to, uh, just to get their prioritization. I guess, do we need it, do we not, you know, that sort of thing, uh, so just keep, keep that in mind, you're gonna hear some stuff coming from, um, and, and. Our Brian knows to bring it to them, the board as well, so you'll be seeing that soon. I met with, uh, the Connecticut State Police had a meeting at Eastern Vegas State University, uh, last week. Uh, to discuss bringing data to the towns for the resident state trooper program, uh, I, it was, uh, among a couple other things, better communication, um. There was a great recognition on the state police as part of the need to improve the resident state troopers program. Uh, it was refreshing to see so many other town managers, uh, or, and our first selectmen, uh, to echo. The same concerns that myself and Matt Reed and Ellington had. Uh, and it was also equally as refreshing to see the lieutenant come from the state police, whom I knew, uh, in a previous career. Uh, fantastic to see that he's, uh, captaining this, uh, whole process, uh, and they'll be rolling out, uh, the data and some other stuff. Um, you know, hopefully by the, by the beginning of next year. Uh, November third, we're having a, a, a ceremony, a small ceremony, a modest ceremony to open our parks garage. I believe it's at three thirty, SB?
Great.
Three o'clock, uh, and you, you know, as far as council's concerned, we'll have a, a short program, uh, we'll get you all the information, uh, that you need, I guess, so you'll be there. Of course, residents are wel- welcome, uh. We look forward to that, we'll also have our handicap, there's a handicap ramp that we had bought for events, uh, that'll be there for, for council to see as well. I wanna thank everyone that helped, uh, out with the Harvest Fest, the PCC, uh, 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 C- Council Butler, uh, they did a fantastic job. The event was perfect, uh, such a great job, and, and, you know, Trish, Trish Vine worked so hard, and then. Uh, she couldn't be there for the actual event, the other, the other people, uh, four out of the five, uh, were at the event, and it was, uh, they just did a fantastic job. Like, I couldn't be happier, town staff, DPW, public safety, cert, everyone that got involved, the, the resident troopers. I'm sure I'm leaving some people out, but they did, did, uh, a fantastic job, I know health services, that, that Bellamy had a table there. Uh, she was on the, on the green, um, in fact, her, the assistant director, I saw them there as well, uh, so it went very, very well. I wanna thank town staff for participating in the Cider Mill Road Race, I don't know if you saw, but we had a team, I, I wanna thank Tepco for having the Cider Mill Road Race. That raised funds for that, uh, and additionally, thank the town staff that, uh, participated out of their own pocket, uh, to run in the race, it was, it was a, a good event. Um, and our team really, uh, really held, were the, were the, uh, better part of the backend of the, um, the race.
Spirited group, right there.
Spirited group, we wanted to push everyone in front of us, uh, was our goal, you know, support the, you know, a rising tide floats all, I think is how they put it. Uh, as I said, I'm involved in the capital improvements discussion, if you have any concerns or anything ahead of time that you remember last year. Uh, that warrants order or word, you know, feel free to, to, to give me a call, um. There's a free elect, uh, free residence, uh, electronic recycling event, uh, Saturday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, at the high school from eight AM to twelve noon, so this Saturday, eight AM to twelve noon. I think I have a TV going into that, we, we lost some power equipment to a lightning strike, um, earlier. Um, and then, so any, any electronic materials, I know at a previous meeting, there was a concern about the jail museum being a public safety hazard. With that, I sent our building inspector over to look at the jail museum, it is not a public safety hazard. Uh, and he is in fact working with staff there to, uh, uh, move forward with some of the, uh, concerns that they had, and it's, uh, very, very positive, and that's all I have.
Thank you, any questions to Council Shane?
Did you, and I, it was a section of space out there, so I was thinking of other things, but did you mention the firehouse having an open house, the fire department's having an open house this Saturday as well?
No, are they?
Oh, they are.
I think they are as well, I think that's in my report, it is some, it, it's some type of open house, I can't remember what it's for.
Yeah, it's at the main, it's at the main building, man.
I think it's their recruiting event.
Is that what it is?
Council Butler?
Um. I have a question for you.
Hit me.
I heard a story, maybe from a probate judge, that there was an issue with. Some, like squirrels or something putting apples on the ceiling in Town Hall.
Were that probate judge?
I thank the probate judge for running into Cider Mill, uh, memorial race, uh, with us, yes, there was a squirrel.
A lot of apples.
There was an injury, you do, is that you're talking about?
To the squirrel?
No, come on, I'm certain, I caught my head.
I didn't, she didn't tell me that part.
Oh, she didn't?
No, but, but go ahead.
It's irrelevant, there was, there's, the registrar has noticed there was something in the ceiling, uh, it looks, we believe to be a squirrel was gathering apples and had quite a setup up there. Um, I heard about it, I went up and cut, cut my head, um. Much to the delight of some, and, uh, and it's been, uh, mitigated.
She was nice enough to remember that part.
Yes, so I, I thank the town, uh, staff for bringing that up to you.
I like hearing that in your trooper reporting voice, the.
Yeah. Right, was that, great.
I see there's a upgrade to the local traffic authority.
Was there?
Yes.
Who, who was that?
Uh, signs were installed on Hopeless Road and Regro.
Oh, oh, I know, the local traffic authority is our DPW director, I don't know if we, he got, okay, um.
Two flashing.
Yes, yes. Those were my, the brands.
Say, I think it would make me happier, cause that and the troopers is really our two big horses.
Yeah, we get a lot, we do get a lot of requests for, um, the splashing signs, different, different types, um, so, yes, we, when we can get them, the one on Reed Road. Uh, and I forget where the other one was, yep, um. I'll leave it there.
Good question, Brian, for you, the, um, CT development, this is a lot of activity now, they've got a couple buildings up, do you? Know when they're gonna start opening that up for occupancy, what their, their plan is?
Yeah, I did know that, I wanna say. Later in twenty twenty-six, they hope to, to be the last quarter of twenty twenty-six, I believe, is when they plan on, uh, to start in the first building.
So, okay.
Yeah, it sounds apartment seeming like they're almost done.
Yeah, that was, that is.
On the outside, they're sealed in, but now you gotta, you know.
Yeah, Joe, they call it half outside, half inside.
Yeah, they're front loaded down, get to do the half of the work inside when it's in inclement weather, but yeah, you're still gonna do it here, at least. The house, you put up a house in seven months, it's gonna take them another seven to finish.
Well, so the first one is the slowest, and they'll work out all the kinks with the first building and, and, uh, start moving from there. Um, they, they literally, that's, that's the philosophy, is we'll try to work out all the cakes for the first one, and then we'll go from there.
Thanks, all right, any other questions for Brian? I had a question, kind of just pertaining to Dennis Stewart's, I don't know if that's more appropriate for our, of course, you know, our council discussion, but. Um, probably could go under re, either, if it's something that Brian can answer.
Uh, thi- this probably won't be a popular opinion, Brian, but I don't care, um, how do you feel about? This is probably a little, that's why it's funny, how do you feel about a middle town type? Slow down traffic cameras out here, as far as giving the town much-needed, uh, revenue and also. Playing off of Dennis Stewart's point, um, having people not going thirty miles an o- an hour over. Speed limit with your aforementioned shortage of troopers.
In an impoverished city like Hartford, where I used to work, I was dead set against them, however. Looking at different things that I've had to look at here recently, uh. Looking at different things that I've had to look at here recently, uh and uh being approached by many vendors, uh looking uh to do that here. I would absolutely consider bringing that to council at some point, um after, you know, meeting with vendors, vetting through uh a lot of the process, uh you know. Thirty thousand feet away, just kind of thinking about it, from the back end of one ninety five, where we just, we've had a lot of accidents, including fatality. Um, you know, towards the Wellington line, would I, would a speed camera uh be affected there, yeah, lots of work through the state road, can we do it, I believe we can. What would the impact be, what would the effectiveness be, would it have any effect on our traffic, there's this, it's just a lot to look at, um and a lot to bring forward to to put through to council, um. Most of my career, I was, I was not very pro um camera enforcement like that, however, you know, again. There's there's some data that that that's making me consider it, so.
Well, yeah, no, and I I appreciate obviously your your acumen to to analyze that 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 data, but just looking up, you know, when when Mr. Dugan was was. Explaining that, I was looking up the statistics from middle town, they had, they had, well, obviously, middle towns traffic is really ten times the town center risk. But regardless, they had implemented that in May, in the survey in July, they raised one point two million. Just to give you an idea of. Even this year number, I mean, and then.
As a town manager, I look at what middle town, other towns are doing and say, I could put school security based on a ca- a camera on one ninety five.
Correct.
That's how I look at it.
So unfortunately.
It's not about raising money, it's about improvement of safety and and, you know, I kind of keep that in the back of my mind.
Whoever, whoever on this council makes it through the next round. No, I think you guys are something, it's a little off if you wanna do that anymore, but um whoever does make it through, I I really do suggest that that's like A one. And it would look, I think it would look great for everybody involved, especially the guy that, you know, chased down Mr. Dude. He would just have to leave him there.
We used to have a lot. More traffic, chicken stops, like Peter Green is on the commuter routes, but but it was unpopular because the people that got stopped were the people. That were from that area.
Sure, yeah, no, I I've seen those statistics, I'm more geared gearing it towards, you know, I travel to all different states and.
Yep.
Um. New England here, and I know that when I go to Rhode Island, there is signage.
Yep.
There is flashing lights, I mean, this isn't a school, a school zone. But they do have um in designated areas that are not, you know, um earmarked for just school loans, so. Move that.
Thank you. All right. Um, we'll move on to adoption of minutes, I've got two sets of minutes to adopt from the special meeting on the twenty third and the regular meeting and all of that, so. I'll entertain motion to adopt the minutes, so.
Second.
Uh, moved by Council Moran, segmented by Council Weeby, any changes to the minutes? Um, most everyone who's here, so I can do a poll call vote if you wanna stay, Council Butler?
Hi.
Council Weeby? Let's see, Council Greenie?
Hi.
Hi, Council Moran?
Hi.
Council Shay?
Hi.
Council Weeby?
Hi.
I'm nice boss of those, best. Um, correspondence to council, Council Greenie?
Uh, we received two emails, uh both were invitations to webinars, one from the council of foreign relations and one from nonprofit Go Rail Association regarding rail upgrades.
Okay, council.
Talking about tariffs. Joey, nothing today, across word of texture.
I got one today?
I saw it, yeah, it was like a junk mail thing, kept out.
It sounded random sometimes, who they send mail to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, yeah. I don't even, I don't even find out it, because I checked my emails.
Yeah, those are the two.
An hour before I got it.
Baltimore addressed to you, but they went to all of us, so.
That's okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, all right, chairpersons report, um I talked about the S R O and and everybody um who helped make that happen or is in the process of making it happen. Um, just a couple other things I'll make note of, um, big thank you to the Talon Fire Department and D P W for um performance of the past couple of days with the first uh restart of the season. Talon got hit too bad, but there was some power outages and some town trees and wires, so that's good to um see them out and and helping us out. Um, and the other thing was is, I believe the scarecrow voting is still open, right, Council Butler?
Aye.
So be sure to go out and take a look at the green and all the uh big scarecrows that are up there.
Were there scarecrows scattered around by the wind?
No, we did all right.
That's good.
They stood the, they stood the wind test.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um voting is open up till the twenty eighth?
Seventh, I think?
Twenty seventh.
Twenty third, twenty third?
Twenty third, huh?
Oh, no, break down, sorry.
Vote before the twentieth, then you'll be good.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Just vote like tonight and Google it, um, so, yeah, definitely a great way to see um all the different groups that participate and uh support our town. That's all I have for that, so I'll go into communications and petitions and council persons.
And Council Moran? Just one good thing, um echoing whoever mentioned it, Harvest Fest was fantastic, so thank you to P C C and everybody on that that did that, um due to me, sir. Everyone who put any time for that, it was a great event, um and they continue to, you know, closing off that road, uh and, you know, being able to extend things over to the. Burger Green, I don't know, North?
North.
North Green, whatever it is, and they had some like old antique tractors out there and stuff, there's not, I think Jim, wait, if anything, for that, so that was great, um it's a nice, it's a really nice.
Thank you. Uh, Council Green?
Um, I had, was contacted by the resident at uh Candlewood, who had reported all the potholes on the street in Brookmore. He uh contacted me again to report that the D P W had come out and filled over potholes, so I just wanted to thank our department of public works for taking care of that so quickly.
Our director of highways is watching right now, so.
Thank you.
It's good to hear. Uh, Council Weeby?
I wanna second the um Harvest Fest, um we had family come over from Coventry and they were like blown away by the whole event. The circulation was fantastic, the way that you guys set it up, so that you could walk in front and all the tables were in the back, um absolutely like stellar and. Was, you know, it facilitated people being able to kind of stand and watch without having to get in the way of other people, um. I also wanted to um thank all of you that worked on the um S R O, um the the school resource officer. I know that that we, it was, it was a big issue for us during budget, thank you for pushing it through, thank you for Jen and. Walt and Tony for coordinating the board event, and thank you, Brian, for doing everything that you did to make that work, um and. Thank you, Alex, I think you're right, it's not a, it's a, it's an umbrella town, like we are all the town, um so it's a, it's an umbrella town thing. Um, and then lastly, the grant we got for uh the early voting. We got more money than Wellington, we got more money than Mansfield, we got more money than Coventry, um that is a result, I think, of the number of people that voted. Um, so we had extremely high early voter turnout, which got us this money, so. Please, everybody spread the word and do that more, because then we can get, you know, the grant monies come come to us, so kudos to our staff for them.
So I know you guys wanna go home, but this is uh education for thousands of people listening, but more specifically just merely of our southern border here. Francis West was one of uh Talon's first settlers, um that was starting his house on Talon Center. Residents of Coventry had other dear, other ideas about Coventry's north line boundary, um where it was located and objected. Mister Francis West was not a resident of Coventry, in seventeen thirteen, you had to ask permission to be a resident and he was not, he had not asked. The disagreement was taken to the colonial government, a survey was needed, commissioning completed, um it did not settle the matter and two more surveys were done. Seventeen twenty two, the colonial government uh settled the disagreement by simply decreeing one survey to be the official boundary between the towns. Um, the highway over Meeting House Hill was not the center of town as expected. Uh, while the argument over town lines raged, Talon actually postponed building its first meeting house, church, and common. Um, to its proper location, uh where it currently is, so, there you go, looks for.
Cool.
Very good.
And that's why the fence.
That's what I was gonna say, and then they.
I'm working hard for the fence job, Ryan, I'm getting mine, yeah, this is your, uh, this is your.
I'm, I'm getting one, I know that you've been there, I don't think, I'm getting one, yeah.
Anything else to me, council, councilors? All right. Uh, that brings us to our um last public list of participation, this time of the three minute on it, I'll go to the room first. Sorry, George.
What's my, supposed to raise my hand or is it?
I, I know.
Uh, Floyd George, Shishan Gate Road, um, I have a quick question on on the new buildings going up behind Big Y. Everybody's asking me, what are townhouses, are they condos or are they apartments?
Apartments.
They're apartments, okay.
They can build apartments.
So I got a lot of people to ask. Uh, I totally agree with you, Joe, but. I agree with you, John, because. We don't know if any of you are gonna be here next month, so let's not do this thing all over again with new people and stuff, let's pass something. So I like your idea better, because at least now it gets us moving forward and it gives us more data, so that if this everybody waits till two years to bring this up again. You have more data on what's happening, plus the fact that anybody that's new is gonna get an automatic hundred percent bump. Anybody that's already in the system, if you're already getting seven hundred, now they're gonna get eleven hundred, because they're gonna get to three hundred that everybody else is getting, plus a hundred for the extra year. So it's actually a win-win for everybody, not what people should be getting, but at least a step in the right direction and it gives us a lot more data. Yeah, it's, I don't see how we're gonna ever, because of the increases, that we're ever gonna get to anywhere near to that half a percent, people panic over small things. Another thing, we're always talking about two people, well. I'm all by myself, what's my numbers, uh is it in that paperwork that we get in the, with the taxes and stuff? It's what, you know, the ninety one thousand, what's my limit?
Same.
It's in there?
It's per household.
Oh, it's per.
It's not per person, it's not.
It's always talking about two people.
Yeah, they, well, they, we, we ju- we use that, right, like, we use that as a a guideline, but it's, it's for the house, so if yours belong, you still get that.
Okay.
Yeah, um, yeah, we gotta somehow get that out better to people. Uh, one of my neighbors, uh recently, we're talking about this, she had a, the town council's taking this up, and she says. Well, I only get allowed to three hundred dollars, I said, you, I thought you started, you just just started last year. She said, no, about five years ago, I said, did you look at your bill? I said, you should be getting eight hundred, so a lot of people don't realize what's happening. So you just, you know, cause your taxes always go up, they don't realize that the extra money is also going to come, somehow, it'd be nice if we could get this stuff. You know, we should have a, like a, a volunteer caravan that goes around to all the old people houses and explain to them, because people like myself that. Are computer illiterate, uh don't really know except for being here and clear their mouth and hanging out with old people. So anyways, that's my idea, the other only idea idea is we ought to make a a indoor pickleball court in that open part of this stupid. Thing up there that had had a grocery store in there for twenty years, when Big Y moved in, you look at uh one down at.
Oh, the fitness center?
I, I, it used to be.
Oh, is there something in there now?
No.
There's nothing in there. There's nothing in there.
Vernon has one.
Yeah.
Do indoor pickleball.
But like.
Concess the property.
Yeah, but what could if it's closed, you know, nine months of the year, so my idea is like with Vernon, they took this Star Hardware, or whatever, Sears Hardware. And here they got income coming in, they got like ten courts in there, people paying, use them all the time, they got food in there, they got to have parties in there. So that we need to think outside the box a little bit, so use some of these empty places around here and stuff, draw in paying income.
You gotta go, this is opportunity, George, you should.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just need to lease out that that building.
Well, I gotta, it it's, do I have some backers that give me some money?
Talk about a tax.
Oh, yeah, I'll apply your tax today.
I'll still be here, try, you know, all right. You guys might have to. I'll go online. Right. I think that closes out public participation, um is there any objection to adjournment at nine fifty P M?
Yeah.
No, no, right, sure.
Thank you.